I call to order this regular meeting of the City of Campbell City Council Tuesday, June 4th, 2024. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bybee, present. Councilmember Fittato.
Here.
Councilmember Scizola.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Here.
Mayor Nandry.
Present. And I am going to lead the pledge of allegiance and I want to point your attention to the flag is now on the proper side according to Dan Fittato. Our flag, so the flag is over here now? Ready? My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. There are no special presentations or proclamations today, and we have no communications or petitions. We do have an oral request. This is the portion of the meeting reserved, the portion persons wishing to address the council on any item that is not on the agenda. If you wish to speak, you can fill out a speaker card. If not, just come up to speak. You are limited to up to two minutes and the law generally prohibits the council from discussing or taking action on the item you speak about. However, we can instruct staff accordingly with oral requests. So Joseph. Yeah, touch that brown thing. The up on the top, the round.
Thank you. So there were two issues that I'd like to address. And one was the creeks over here at the Campbell Park, right over by there, heading towards Bascom. The issue was that people are swimming in the creek. And it turns out that you guys didn't want those people in there. And that was in 2020 when I found, discovered it. But there also there's a place where people are swinging on a tire. Just so you guys know, that also is being done over at the creek area. The second issue that we have is over at Morgan John Park. We have people parking late at night, ten, ten PM to six o'clock in the morning or after hours. And that's been an issue for quite a long time. And we also have found broken glass in the parking lot. And that's on Bud and Sharm, uh, Santa Moss Expressway. We also found, one time we found a lot of trash on that where the bridge goes in the parking lot, a bunch of, um. We found, I found a lot of trash in that area. And then also the other issue is that dog, people with dogs. I understand that there were signs where you can't have the dogs on leash. So that's also been an issue that I wanted to address. And then the last issue was that, I think that was it. Off the leash. Right as you go towards Bascom, the bridge area that crosses over, heading towards Bascom. People have been swimming in that, under where the bridge is area. And then there's also a tire that's hanging somewhere in that area that people are swinging on.
The holiday commemorates the date in seventeen seventy-seven when the United States approved the design of the first national flag. And it's been brought to my attention that June fourteenth is also the day in seventeen seventy-five that the army was started. So it's the army's birthday. Thank you, Dan, for that. Uh, next, due to the high temperatures through Thursday, June sixth, the Campbell Community Cooling Center is open for the public to use from twelve to seven PM. In Q eighty, which is located across from the pool. Table and chairs are provided in the air-conditioned space. Attendees should bring a book or a quiet activity that is not disruptive to others. Next, the Campbell Police Department will be taking part in the annual law enforcement torch run on Friday, June twenty-eighth at nine AM. Each year has hundreds of law enforcement personnel participate in bringing awareness and raise funds for the Special Olympics. Keep a lookout on social media for additional information about the event. Next, the city clerks is accepting applications for the planning, civic improvement commission, and the bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee. To find out more, please contact the clerk's office at four oh eight six, I'm sorry, eight six six. Four oh eight, eight six six two one one seven. Or visit the city's website at campbellca.gov. The deadline to apply is Friday, August second. Next, sign up for several summer reading at the Campbell Express Library. It's fun, there's prizes and events, and it's free and open to all ages. Register online at s c c l d dot org. Next, due this summer in lieu of the wave practice held September through May, the community center is offering the Wave Clinic. The Wave Clinic will occur on Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday each week. And will provide swimmers with instructions to improve endurance, timing, and stroke techniques. To find out more, please visit the city's website at campbellca.gov. Next, the Campbell Adult Center offers a range of supportive services for older adults and their families, such as case management, health insurance advocacy, free legal services, caregiving consultations, and technology tutoring. Services are free of charge and do not require adult center membership. For more information or to schedule appointment, contact the adult center at four oh eight, eight six six two one four six. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the consent calendar. And is there any council members, staff, or members of the public that would like to pull an item from the consent count? Elliot, do you have a comment you want to make?
Yeah, I didn't want to pull it. I just, I did have a comment though. I just want to thank staff, everyone at the city for helping to negotiate this new rent stabilization contract for Timber Cove Mobile Home Park. Uh, it's my understanding that all parties involved were relatively satisfied with the results, which ended up being an annual base rent increase of three percent or seventy-five percent of CPI, which is well below the state standard which Campbell currently adheres to. So very cool.
I would like to tag on to that, uh, a comment that I, I was in discussion with the city manager about this and the city's been involved as a third party, uh, uh, to the, to the agreement for, for many years. And it doesn't make a lot of sense to me that the city should be involved as a third party. So maybe, I don't know how the council would feel about it, but maybe in the next negotiation cycle that we consider removing ourselves as a third party and let the two parties negotiate their own terms.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, I'll entertain a motions for items, uh, two, one through eleven.
Move the council approved consent calendar items one through eleven.
Second?
Second.
Elliot, second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bybee.
Aye.
Councilmember Fittato.
Aye.
Councilmember Scizola.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Aye.
Aye, that motion passes. Next is our public hearings and introduction of ordinances. Item twelve is the introduction. Where's Ryan? Who's over there? Okay. All right. So number twelve, and we have Brian and Will Fuentes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Um, we've been here and talked about this progressively throughout the year. Uh, as the council allows, um, this is a priority-based budget. Uh, it really started uh, back when we began the council priority setting, uh, at the early.
The year? Got it?
Okay. Um, it started back in the early part of this year when we met with the council about priority setting, um, on February twenty-eighth. And council gave us, uh, the direction of the priorities and some ideas to continue to work on, uh, related to our work plans and budgeting for the resources necessary to achieve those priorities. At the May seventh, uh, budget study session, uh, we presented to you, uh, the summary of that work, uh, and what it resulted in, um, uh, as the councils aware was a budget deficit on May seventh of, uh, three, about three point eight million dollars. Um, and so, um, we've again, uh, based on council's input from May seventh, uh, have continued to work, uh, in the areas that we have talked about. Uh, maybe next slide, please. Um, and, um, we have implemented, um, the short-term budget corrections that we raised to the council that in, include um, some additional detail, um, on high rain freezes, um, strategically looking at, um, perhaps high, high rain freezes is overly broad term, but not so much freezing, but strategically looking at when we fill those positions. Um, trying to balance our workloads, our staffing and human resources at the current time, uh, as well as financial resources. Uh, we also had proposed to look, uh, at using our CalPERS pension reserve to pay for some of the increased pension costs. Uh, and then looking at the ARPA funding again, uh, although, uh, in this budget, you'll see we've slightly increased the amount of ARPA proposed for the operating budget. We also heard the council, um, question whether or not if the parklets, um, I'm sorry, not the parklets, the capital improvement projects that were being proposed with those ARPA funds was appropriate. And we backed those out of this, uh, and, um, it's allowed for more ARPA funds to be used at council's discretion. We'll talk about that a little bit more in a few minutes. And then there was some other miscellaneous expenditure reductions that's shown on this slide here, uh, is about, uh, seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, these are things that were, uh, for the most part, talked about at the May seventh meeting, including looking at overtime contractual sources and trade. Um, that, as I said, had a savings of seven hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and then also at that May meeting, we talked about the long-term strategies. Um, I recognize, um, that that's more of a, a, a long-term, uh, discussion. That doesn't have to be something that we answer tonight. I wanted to recognize that was a piece of the strategy. We talk about corrective strategies. It's not just short-term strategies, also looking at some long-term strategies, uh, including looking at revenue measures potentially in November, uh, and looking at repurposing or restructuring the way that we use our reserves. Not to, not to be less conservative with our reserves, but be more strategic about how they're used, be specific, uh, intentional about their use. And those are discussions, uh, that we recognize here, but we're not going to solve tonight, but we'll continue to have some discussions on that. Uh, and I think the council had interest, uh, in the whole council having that discussion, not just the finance. Would anticipate those discussions coming back to this council, um, that, uh, uh, this summer. Uh, as well as the remainder of the ARPA funds, uh, we've highlighted for you, um, some of the uh, ARPA usage here, uh, and the proposed usage going forward. Uh, and I'm not going to read each of these. You, you can, uh, see it both in your report and on this slide. Uh, and the previously approved mount, uh, what that means in a nutshell is if the council were to move forward with the operating and capital budget as is proposed, there would still be a remaining one point four six million in ARPA funds that would need to be spent down or contractually committed, uh, by December of this year. Uh, and that too, just like the long-term strategies that we just talked about, is, is an ongoing discussion. We don't have to solve those, uh, commitments, uh, that one point four six million dollars, uh, tonight. I do want to understand if the council's comfortable with the amount of ARPA money being proposed in the operating budget. Certainly get your feedback. The staff report tees up some discussion points, uh, related to ARPA, some of the things, uh, that were mentioned at the last main meeting, uh, including uniform, uh, income. Um, there's some additional thoughts that staff has provided on, uh, below market rate, um, I'm sorry, uh, housing vouchers, not below market rate, housing vouchers for the unhoused, cold wa, uh, well, uh, cold weather sheltering, um, cost for the unhoused. Uh, and a few other ideas, uh, that are flushed out in that staff report. Um, we can certainly talk about that, get feedback tonight from the council, but the intent is to recognize that that is probably an ongoing. Uh, we hope to come back to you, uh, if not the next meeting, certainly in July, and finish up the discussion on ARPA usage and get some ideas from the council. So, um, we'll tee that up a little bit tonight, recognizing we don't have to have the full answer on that tonight. Next slide, please. All right. I will turn it over to Will for this next slide. Thank you.
All right, um, so, uh, have we, uh, uh, that in, uh, hey, um, they were, um, like, again, uh, we were again, uh, we were again, uh, talking about, um, a, a, a potential, a budget, um, I, I would say, uh, about, um, a four, about a three point eight, uh, then the value in uh, total, um, uh, again, uh, however, um, the, uh, month, um, we, uh, 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 put in, uh, 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 a place, um, a couple of, uh, a, a couple of, uh, tour, uh, uh, couple of, uh, directions, um, that, that, that will, um, address, uh, the, um, uh, uh, problem, um, in the up, in the upcoming, uh, 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 year, um, but they're, they're, they're really, um, they're really only, um, uh, meant to, uh, address, uh, the, uh, problem in the, uh, uh, general fund, um, just for a, a short, um, uh, uh, just, just for a sh, a short, uh, you know, a time, um, but, uh, what, um, what, what were, um, the things that, uh, that did, um, uh, 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 cause the problem? Um, we're, 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 we're also, uh, discussed, uh, with the, uh, discuss with the council in, um, a, um, I won't, um, like, again, uh, uh, go through the, uh, whole, uh, uh, detail of, uh, what, um, uh, caused the uh, problems, um, but, um, they're, they're, they are also shown up upon the up screen as of here, um, but the, um, uh, the keeping, uh, you know, uh, at the, uh, current, uh, the current, uh, the current, uh, post of, uh, budget is, that are, that the, uh, the income and expenses in the, uh, 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 general fund, um, are, uh, equal, um, and, 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 and so it's, um, again, uh, due to the, uh, uh, actions, um, that, that were, um, put in, uh, in the place, um, but, but also, um, again, uh, we were, we were, we were able to re, to reduce our, um, ex- expected expenses as well. Um, but in a, a, a total in our income and expenses, um, it's about a, a one, a one point one, uh, percent, a one point one percent de- uh, decrease from the, uh, from the current year, um, and about this, uh, 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 I think, point eight, um, uh, uh, in, uh, a total in both, uh, income and expenses. Um, so this, um, this, and I, I have some, uh, chart, uh, just, um, uh, uh, shows, um, the, uh, key, um, income and ex, 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 expenditure, like, uh, groupings, um, are, um, are, uh, um, from a, from a income, uh, uh, perspective, um, the, the, uh, 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 top two, um, uh, groupings are, uh, 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 for operating tax, um, and also, uh, tax as well, um, but also, um, uh, key, oh, key, uh, which, which, uh, will hide the, uh, under the which would be under the other, uh, like, other, uh, other, that's a grouping, um, and, and, and that in terms of ex, uh, expenses, um, are, are the the, the top, um, uh, cost, um, a group, uh, by, um, of, 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 of our, um, is, uh, certainly our, uh, personnel expenses, um, but, but also, um, our, our outside, uh, uh, contracts, um, but, but also, um, the, uh, the outs, the outs, the outside, uh, uh, contract, uh, to the accounting, um, to, uh, to, uh, to, uh, to provide, uh, a fire as well. Um, so the out, the outside, uh, uh, contract to the, uh, uh, accounting, um, is, is also about eighteen, uh, eighteen percent of our, uh, total expenses as well. Um, so to, uh, uh, take on the upcoming, uh, the upcoming, uh, post a, a budget, um, but, but also, um, the, uh, uh, current, um, uh, trends of ex, expenses and, and, and income, um, our, our ex, expenses can continue to, uh, ju, uh, jump up, um, over, um, the ex, ex, expected, uh, right, uh, that our that our income is also ex, ex, expected, uh, to grow, um, so if, um, if you were to, uh, jack out the, uh, the, our entrance, um, but also if you aren't to either, um, address, um, expenses or also income, um, we, 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 we are, uh, projected, um, uh, to see, uh, about, uh, 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 three, uh, uh, four, um, billion, uh, a dollar, uh, a deficit, um, through, um, the, um, uh, uh, term of, uh, the, uh, the, uh, uh, objection, uh, showing, but it, um, it, like, like, it, again, it, again, like, does, um, assume, um, that there, there aren't, um, extra, uh, 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 extra, correct, correct, that are taken. We would, us, us, us certainly, uh, uh, take steps, um, in, in, in the up, in the upcoming, uh, uh, yeah, uh, uh, year, um, to, um, address the, uh, problems. But if, if no, like, additional steps were, uh, taken, um, then we, we can continue to expect about a three, uh, uh, double, uh, billion, uh, a dollar, uh, a, a three, uh, a dollar, uh, a deficit each a year. Um, so, like, like, again, if, if we were to project it out, I am also, if you what, i- if you, uh, if you, uh, didn't, uh, 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 put in, uh, a place, uh, there's no, uh, additional, uh, additional corrections, um, we, we would, um, begin to, uh, cool, heckly, uh, trying, um, count our, uh, reserve, reserve, reserve accounts. And, uh, uh, based on, upon the, uh, current, um, uh, uh, trends, um, we, we would, um, uh, uh, go from, uh, uh, go from, uh, about a, a six, a sixteen, a point eight, uh, a six, 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 sixteen point eight, I mean, in a total, uh, uh, down to about, uh, two, uh, two, two point eight, um, so it's, 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 it's really not, uh, a good or, like, ideal, a place, uh, uh, to be, um, so al- although we've, um, addressed the, uh, 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 problem in the up- in the up- I mean, uh, uh, year, we still will need to, uh, take steps, um, uh, so that, um, we, uh, uh, don't, uh, get to the, uh, picture, um, that you see upon the, uh, 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 screen here.
Good evening, Council, um, Nora Long, Finance Director. I will be providing you a brief overview of our CIP. As you're aware, CIP is made up of five fiscal years ranging from fiscal twenty-five through fiscal twenty-nine, and not much has changed since the May seventh study session. Um, there were a couple of projects that we will move from the CIP as the city manager had mentioned earlier this evening. Uh, but just to go through the slide, um, our CIP totals ninety-eight point five million dollars, which is a one million dollar increase or decrease from the prior, uh, uh, figure that was provided on May seventh. Um, the CIP is comprised of seventy-six projects, uh, nine of which are new. Um, and so the new projects we have amount to five point two million dollars. Uh, the two major projects that make up the majority of that, that number is our annual street maintenance project, which is three point one million dollars funded by multiple, um, external funding sources, and, uh, the renovation of the E Wing and the relocation of the adult center, which is one point one million dollars funded solely by park fees. Um, and our existing capital projects amount to ninety-three billion dollars. Um, of course, the majority of that is the Mezaro project. Uh, with regards to fiscal twenty-five, our projected CIP expenditures or appropriations amount to six point seven million dollars. And as I had mentioned earlier, uh, the significant changes to the CIP since the May seventh study session uh, is the removal of the Campbell PD enhancement project at the Civic Center Drive and Second and Third Street, um, specifically removing the six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar, uh, allocation from ARPA. And so that amount has been added to the unfunded list. Um, furthermore, we also removed the, uh, the ARPA funding for the city facilities roof replacement, um, and deferred that to fiscal twenty-seven, uh, and to be funded by CAPR in that fiscal year. Um, so that concludes my presentation, congratulations, thank you so much.
Uh, Brian, I, yeah, so, uh, thank you, uh, Nora and, uh, Director Quintus, um, for, uh, helping with the presentation. Um, tonight is the introduction of the budget, so what we're looking for is, certainly we've gotten feedback from the council previously. It was an iterative process, we're looking for additional feedback, uh, to proceed, um, with and finalize the budget we would bring back to you, uh, two weeks from tonight. Um, and we set that date, I think, June eighteenth, is it, uh, as the public hearing date, uh, that's the action we're asking, but certainly we want to get any questions or feedback on the revisions, um, in particular, uh, if there's questions or feedback with regard to the ARPA usage, um, and any ideas going forward that we will flush out, um, or certainly any other questions you may have, staff is also here, the department heads are here to answer any questions specific to their departments.
Okay, questions? Dan?
So, I, I'm not, I don't think I quite understand why those two CIP projects are being removed, I, what was the rationale for that?
So, uh, the, the, uh, intersection improvements were the Second and Third Street improvements, um, and we pulled those out just to have a more total discussion about the ARPA funds. What we heard, and certainly we can be corrected, my understanding to me is it sounded like general consensus from the council was generally supportive of ARPA money being supportive of the, of the operating budget, there were some questions about whether those capital projects were appropriate use of the ARPA funds. I don't want to preclude the council from funding those, we just pulled it out so that the council, it would be a conscious effort if that was the decision, um, until we decided what to do with that money. Certainly those could be allocated at a later date and be added back into the CIP when we have further ARPA discussions. Um, that's certainly another possibility as well, but we wanted to pull those out just because it sounded like there wasn't consensus to move forward, and if we'd misread that, I'd be glad to take direction from the council.
So, but we would need to have um, definitive use of the ARPA funds for something other than those two capital projects, is that correct, by, by the?
We would have to, yes, we would have to contract for the expenditure of those funds by December of this year. Um, and, um, certainly there were some ideas put out, we've given you some feedback in the staff report on those. Uh, we're prepared to move as, as quickly as possible, recognizing those issues haven't been fully flushed out, so we, we, we just want to take a step back, make sure that we're on the same footing with the council, which we drive to that funding, uh, recognizing that those are all important projects, it, it may be in the long run we end up considering those, but we just pulled those back out of an abundance of caution, hearing what we heard from the council.
Um, the second question I have is on, on the work, work plans, um, on the, um, let's see, it's packet page two twenty-seven, on the, um, um, proposal for the, uh, uh, rec- recruitment, um, contract. And what popped out at me is that, uh, my understanding of what we approved at last year's budget was less than what is reported in this staff report. So it, it raised a flag with me, and I, I would like some clarification of that, as well as when we approved the, the contract last year of the budget, um, there was to be a report back to the effectiveness of the the contract and, and how well it was serving us, and so could speak to, um, what, um, the results of the what, what success we've had in recruiting this year, that would help.
Uh, I'll, I'll start with the, the bigger picture on the budget answer as the chief comes up to help us talk about, um, the success and what we found in the program.
Clarification, we're talking police, the second bullet, recruit higher qualified candidates, yes, yes, okay.
Yes, uh, and what's being proposed here, uh, in this, uh, report is a, is a two hundred thousand dollar, uh, budget allocation. And, uh, I think what's being referred to last year, uh, certainly on us, uh, for the confusion, in the staff report, it refers to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars new money, uh, which is supposed to be allocated for, um, a contract for, um, uh, uh, human resources and, um, recruitment, specifically for PD, we had already had fifty thousand dollars in the budget the previous year, it was the intention, it was the a hundred and fifty last year, plus a previous fifty that was in there, for a total of two hundred. In this year's budget, we're referring to last year's budget as two hundred, and when you go back and look at last year's budget in, in a couple of different places, it refers to that hundred and fifty thousand dollars being new money. It was really a hundred and fifty dollars, thousand dollars added to the existing fifty thousand, not really new money. It was increasing fifty thousand to two hundred thousand, which was an increase of a hundred and fifty thousand, not new money of a hundred and fifty thousand. So just to be, uh, clarifying, um, certainly, uh, council member by these comments is, is a very valid point, um, the whole purpose of the document is to be transparent to the public. Uh, and, uh, when I went back and reviewed that, I don't know that it was as transparent as it could be, and I could see how it would be easily confused. So, uh, I wanted to clarify that point, that what we're talking about was fifty thousand dollars that existed in that budget in fiscal year twenty-three. Last year in fiscal year twenty-four, we were adding a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a total of two hundred. This year, we're again asking for two hundred thousand in that same account, which should be equal to what was last year, just wanted to make sure that's pretty number one. And then.
Well, that was one question.
That was the first piece, the second piece was regarding, uh, that, also that, uh, comment last year was that we were going to report back and reevaluate that this year, uh, and the chief's here to be able to talk about the success of the program.
Thank you very much for the opportunity, I can, as a reminder, we came to you back in September of twenty-three with the contract for the recruitment firm that we um, have been using, that contract expires, uh, this month actually, so we're going to be bringing back a, a new contract for fiscal year twenty-five, assuming that, uh, the council authorizes this, but I can tell you preliminarily, um, prior to engaging with this recruitment firm, the police department, uh, was seeing a fifty percent decline year over year on the number of applications that we were receiving for police officers. And during the, the years twenty twenty through twenty twenty-two, we were averaging about fifty applications per year for the position in police office. And, uh, as I'm sure you're aware, uh, just because we received fifty applications doesn't mean that there are fifty viable candidates, it's a pretty stringent process to make sure that, uh, the applicants meet our, our expectations and get through the background process. Uh, most of them who aren't lateral is often through a citizen academy plus a citizen field training program. So up until, uh, we engage this recruitment firm, that fif- those fifty applications were, uh, we would, we would see maybe five to ten percent of those actually making it through the process. And even at that point, once you make it through the process, uh, a hundred percent is, we were not saying a hundred percent success through the training program, just based on our standards. I can tell you, since engaging with, uh, this recruitment firm, um, we've seen a tremendous increase in the number of applications. Last year, there was over a hundred and fifty applications received, and this year in twenty twenty-four, year to date, we've received over a hundred and fifty just halfway through the year. So we're seeing over a three-time increase in the number of applications, and, and I look at our ability to hire qualified candidates, specifically over the last twelve months, we've been successful in hiring ten police officers. Um, as, as some, as you know, we've, uh, we've had some recent ceremonies wearing them in, so, um, we had three who graduated the academy, uh, uh, five plus months ago, and all three are, uh, looking to get off of training later this month. We have another three who graduated from the academy a month ago or so, and are in our field training program, and we have another three who are still in the police academy. So I can tell you that we've seen huge success with the recruitment upper, um, with the recruitment firm that we're using, and, uh, as, as we've put, uh, it on one of the work plans and priority for the police department is continuing that hiring recruitment, so that, uh, we have appropriate staff involved, so they're able to continue providing the outstanding services.
Thank you for the information and the clarification, we appreciate that.
And it will, we'll come back with, uh, assuming that the council, uh, approves this line item, we'll come back with an updated contract, uh, and provide him with overview of those specific numbers and the success.
Thank you.
While you're up there, I, I just want to ask, uh, go ahead. Oh.
Just kidding, I wanted to ask Gary, how many vacancies do you have right now?
It's a, well, it's an easy question and a hard question. Right now, on paper, we are fully staffed, uh, so, but you can't really look at that as being fully staffed because we have basically ten positions that are either in field training or in the police academy, and we have, uh, several people who are out on injury, so when you look at it on paper, we're fully staffed, which is great news and headed in the right direction, when you look at how that translates into patrol staffing, staffing the police department, uh, we'll, it, it takes time, and that, that's why we try to stay ahead of the hiring process, so we're going in the right direction, I'm very happy with where we are, uh, and, uh, looking forward to continue.
Retirements coming up this year?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, and now Ellie.
I, I was just curious to get an idea, uh, obviously I understand in recent years there's been a huge fall off in applicants, but maybe post, or excuse me, pre-COVID, like, what were the numbers before all the craziness that happened over the last, whatever it is, for five years now at this point?
So, um, off the top of my head, uh, there was definitely a drop-off during the, the COVID years, uh, but the numbers pre-COVID were nowhere near the numbers that we're seeing right now, uh, I think there were close to a hundred applications per year pre-COVID. And last year, as I mentioned, I think it was a hundred and fifty-three, and so far this year we have a hundred and fifty-seven, so, uh, the, the recruitment efforts are definitely bringing in candidates, and I can tell you that, uh, historically, when we talk about the training, success in training, and we have a very rigorous training process, uh, making sure that all of our police officers, uh, are exceptional in what they do. Uh, we were seeing about, uh, a fifty percent, uh, a success rate through the police academy and through the field training program. And I can tell you with this recent batch, we're seeing huge success, out of the ten that we sent to the academy, uh, we have nine left, and three of whom are just getting ready to get off of train, so it's, it's a huge success, and I, I, uh, I think it's a reflection of us kind of staying ahead of, uh, our training program, looking at, uh, how we approach the training process and support employees, giving them the resources to succeed. Okay, thank you.
Yes, I do, while you're still there, so you've indicated that, uh, at least on paper, you're fully staffed, that you have some retirements coming up, I know generally you can kind of anticipate numbers of retirements, uh, as a general plan, uh, how many retirements would, would you anticipate perhaps, say, during this next, uh, budget year, fiscal year?
I would estimate probably four to six.
I see, okay, the, the reason why I, I follow up with both Susan and Anne's question is, since you've been successful of positions, do you still need the increase in the, you know, two hundred K, which seems like a lot of money, uh, right now, in other words, it seems like you don't have to be quite as aggressive in recruiting at this point in time that require an increased funding, maybe holding steady or a slight decrease, you know, as things kind of level off, I just sort of, that's a question that occurs to me as a result of all of this.
And it's a, it's a valid question, as, as I look at, uh, the twenty-five plus years that I've been here and the, the staffing numbers that we have, we never seem to be able to get ahead of it, we're always chasing the number, and there's always unforeseen, uh, we, we can predict, predict certain retirements, um, but there's a lot of unknowns in that with how many people pass the training program, if people move out of the area, decide to lateral to another department, retirements that we're not expecting, so I guess my answer to your question is, uh, this is a huge priority for police departments, not just in our region, but throughout the country, and we are all fighting for the best applicants. And my concern on slowing down, even though the numbers on paper look good, is we're trending in the direction of staying ahead of where we need to be with this staffing. If we slow down, I worry that those numbers can be significantly impacted and not have the depth of, uh, of a hiring pool that we need to, to have, and we're being very stringent on who we're looking at and who we're hiring, so, um, I think we're, we're, the, the the contract with All-Star Recruiting is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, per year, and, uh, over the last year, we've, uh, assisted HR with recruitments outside of the police officer role and, uh, seeing success on that. So, um, could there be potentially cost savings within the hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars? Potentially, and, uh, I'm committed to making sure that we're fiscally responsible and using those funds appropriately, uh, I guess my, my ask in, uh, the conversations that I've had with the city manager is uh, making this a priority and having the funds necessary to do the recruiting efforts that we need, uh, and being able to, if in six months we're fully staffed and no concerns, then absolutely we can scale back and, and look at cost savings, but I don't think we're, we're at that point currently.
Uh, I, the thought just dawned on me too, uh, every time we walk by, you know, the, we can see the progress of the new beautiful police building, and I thought, in a sense, is that not the best recruiting tool that we have, like, this is the thing to show off, right, and I think that there's going to be a flood of applicants, like, maybe, I mean, just on that factor alone, not, not to mention people just kind of generally love Campbell and love working there, but, but what are your thoughts on that, that maybe that?
Completely agree with you, when, when I have applicants sitting in my office, I point out my window, window to the excitement that's, uh, being built out there. Um, and I will add on to that, not just the new building is a great recruitment tool, but you hear me talking about all the technology and the tools we have, that is a huge recruitment tool, and you're gonna, you're gonna hear us come back with, uh, with a new piece of technology that I, I think will actually potentially allow us to get a lot of lateral applicants from other agencies, uh, because of how exciting, uh, the new technology that we're looking at is to, uh, to the job.
That's good to hear, yeah, I'm just, uh, you know, we're trying to pinch every penny possible these days, so I'm glad to hear that, and I, I agree with some of Dan's concerns that he just brought up there, so thank you for answering that, appreciate it. All right, I do have questions. Gary, you can feel free.
Problem.
I want to take everybody's time.
Uh, uh, no, it's, it's okay. I'm gonna, I'll move on to other areas if that's okay. First one for me is actually the reclassification to economic development managers. So. No, I don't, I don't know. I was saying, yeah. I told you, you can sit down. I, yeah, I don't, I don't know if that's for you or Rob, but I just want to hear about the strategy. And obviously, the relative number is a small one, but again, as we're thinking about increased costs and, and long term, I just wanted to hear a little bit about the strategy there.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor Lopez. We, we are proposing to continue to move forward with the economic development manager's position. As you alluded to in the past budgets, we've had a specialist in that role. And as we've developed our economic development plan, part of our strategy is reevaluate that staffing position. And I think we knew all along as we were doing that, we were staffing at a much lower level than what our expectations were for that position. And finishing the economic development report proved that out, that really need a higher level position that can broker those relationships that are necessary and sort of work on those projects without day-to-day management of a department head or a senior manager in the organization. And that's something that was sorely lacking with everything that we're trying to do. This budget still proposes some work in that area. Because as we talk about deficits, we're never going to get in front of the deficit unless we improve our revenues as well. And so strategically looking at some of those, I think there's a hundred and, I want to say a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in not just that position, but also initiatives that have to be done if we're going to stay on plan. We can push those all off. But if we're going to do those, we need to hire someone with those capabilities. And the idea is to bring on someone at that little bit higher level. There is a slightly increased cost to us. The hope is that that slight increase in cost pales to the benefits that are gathered from it and that momentum that happens when you build relationships and start filling vacancies and you start getting those large sales tax producers or property tax payers to, to be invested. So part of that is also recognizing that our staffing and HR right now is in transition and that we can't hire that probably as quickly as we would like. And so we're deferring the hiring of that position. Not, not deferring it, but probably being realistic of when we can bring that on board to later this fall, just, just to actually get the recruitment out and, and bring them on board. And in the meantime, we have an existing contract relationship with, with Leslie Parks, as you all know, through Good City. And we have extended, this proposal is to extend her contract. So there's some overlap there. And it's probably for a good reason that there can be a handing off, not just someone walking out the door and someone trying to pick up the document. The economic development plan is intended, someone could literally pick it up off the desk and say, what am I supposed to do? But we want to do better than that. We want to have some, some overlap there. But we hope to get someone in here that can really act at that level that you've, you've seen with Leslie. She's been a great resource to us as a contractor, and I think the council has appreciated her service. And that's the sort of level and the, the ability to communicate, build relationships.
Great. I'm, I'm gonna hold my comments out of respect to the discussion. It just strikes me as this is going to be a focus of my later comments. I wonder whether that might not be an appropriate use of ARPA funds. Some respect with what you're talking about, what I've been saying is, is the strategy behind all the budget actions that, that we're taking. My other question goes back to a really great point that Dan made at our May meeting last time we had the discussion, which is about the use of the, the PERS reserve. And so I, obviously, I, I, I think this is very appropriate use of the reserve. But can you just say a little bit more about the long-term strategy? I, I mean, and, and, and the point that I'm thinking of was just the fact that this, this is a huge relative to our budget size of a big unaccounted forecast. So I, I'm thinking of just, just kind of overall how we think about it, what are, what are the, the trend lines? How are we anticipating? You know, I think another increase of this scale would be very challenging to the, certainly to the existing reserve fund and then even more long-term. So just wondering how we're thinking about that and preparing for the future.
Quiet. I, I think that there's an easy answer, there's a more difficult answer. So I'll start with the easy answer. The easy answer is we got to find more revenue to support things that we really can't control. We can control expenditures, and that's a hard answer, right? We can go through our budget and we can cut programs and expenses and provide just core services. We try to do too much, but we're really not going to help ourselves without looking for additional revenues because some of these things, and CalPERS is a great one, that's going to continue outside of our control to do things that are going to put our, our budget at risk. And we can be fiscally prudent, we can plan, and that's part of the strategy. Part of the strategy is also recognizing that we have to be mindful about pension costs when we have negotiations with our labor groups and have an honest conversation. They, employees are our most important resource and we should value them as such, but we also have to make those deals that are sustainable. And I think we also need to be mindful that as new employees come in, PEPRA, which was put in place in, in the teens here, is, has a lower pension system for new employees who are coming into government. And we are already seeing, certainly, public safety is one of our more expensive groups from, from a labor perspective. But we're already seeing a tremendous amount of the labor transitioning to what we call tier three. Tier one is the old-fashioned method. Tier two, Campbell sort of created their own methodology for employees who were hired after two thousand thirteen. And then there's the PEPRA employees. And so we've already seen benefit from tier two. We have many employees here that are tier two and are reduced cost. I am one of those and there's others that have, that are more recent. But even the more recent, those that haven't been in government, when we hear of new police hires and people going into the academy or graduates from college, they're all new into the system and they will be at a reduced level. When you look in, in the budget, we explained this, that the salaries, the pension cost for those newer employees is probably half of the pension cost for the old classic jobs. And when I talk about those expenses in law enforcement, those CalPERS pension costs are almost fifty percent of what our ongoing day-to-day costs are for personnel. So they're significant costs. So that piece alone over time will help in a large degree. But that's taking time and we've already seen several years, as years pass, that will become more, more successful to us.
Great. I, I, again, I'll hold my, my comments, but thank you. That's all my questions for now. I just wanted to clarify specifically tier three. This is for you, Brian, actually. Sorry. So when you're referencing tier three, these are new hires, does that ultimately mean they're getting less benefits than the tiers before them, the generation before them? Is it like, oh, sorry, you're a millennial, you don't get as much as the generation four? I just want to understand.
This was, this was state law, Cal, CalPERS law. They required the employees hired after a certain day were in that tier. It is a, it is a reduced benefit, to speak of it that way.
So forced reduction in benefits for, for the newer generations.
Most cities have two tiers, which is that tier that we're speaking of and the classic tier. Campbell created its own tier back in the day when cities were realizing these costs. Campbell took action, they created a second tier. The other cities we're talking about, many of them pulled back. Campbell was one that created, so we really have three tiers. So we've seen more benefit than some cities, but all cities receive the benefit of that, that reduced tier. It is a reduced pension benefit. Don't know if it's just millennials, it could be other people that aren't of that generation that just are new into government. Maybe they were consultants their whole life and now are.
Sure.
But they, but they do.
Although you, you boomers, I'm sorry.
I have a couple of questions. Getting back to something that Anne first brought up regarding the CIPR, the other item that has been transferred now, if I understand it correctly, to the reserve element was roof replacement. And can you indicate which roofs are we talking about there?
I'm looking at our public works director, if he can help come up and speak to those roofs. I think he's talking about the ones that we deferred to the unfunded list till, or not unfunded, but we put it to two thousand twenty-seven. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think this is right. So what you will recall in, from the original proposed budget that we had brought forward, we, we had a roofing project in all five years of the CIP because we recognized that, that we have quite a significant backlog of roofs that need replacement. And the current year, you know, we've got several projects already underway, most notably out at the community center. And then we're also doing a portion of the Seto Oaks Fire Station. So we were going to, then continue with the next priorities, which I believe are largely, are largely some of the remaining buildings out at the community center. And so this, by removing that project from fiscal year twenty-five, doesn't really remove those roofs from the program. What it does is it defers everything out a year. So what it means is, is that some of the older roofs that we have, have already identified essentially needing immediate replacement would not be addressed until fiscal year twenty-six.
Yep. I think you answered part of my question at least. First of all, the roof on building M is going to continue. It's already.
M is going to continue, the other one is C.
Oaks Fire Station, and that is.
Yes.
Still on the books and so on. So the potential deferral of the other potential, other roofs, I guess at the community center, does that pose a problem? I mean, are you having leaks or issues? Or is it, you're just trying to be a little bit proactive and anticipate what's going to happen?
We are past the point of being proactive with, with roofing repairs. We are out of, we're past proactive, we are into, into full corrective mode. The roofs that we have that need replacement really do not lend themselves to short-term repairs anymore. We've kind of exhausted that. So we can continue to do some of that, but we're really not, not spending our resources that wisely because these are roofs that really require full replacement. And yes, we can make short-term repairs, but that doesn't change the fact that they need, it's like, it's somewhat analogous to patching potholes on the roadway, right? You can patch a pothole to preserve that road to make it last an extra year. But a bad road is still a bad road and it needs, needs a significant level of rehabilitation. We're finding that same level of deterioration with, with our roofs, many of which are beyond thirty years in, in age. And you know, the standard for, for roofs is when you purchase a good roof, it's, it's a thirty-year roof. And we're well beyond that, particularly at the outer, outer wing buildings at the community center.
Well, then, I appreciate that, but that kind of begs the question. I mean, is it going to cost, by deferring it now, is it going to cost us more money later on? I mean, is, is it a good idea to defer that? Or should we make every effort to sort of keep that?
Everything costs more if it's deferred, right? We, we saw that in, in very dramatic form over the pandemic. We, we saw that with some of the bids that came in for the Measure O projects. We cannot fix every roof in year one, which would be next year. So we have to defer some things. But if you defer the whole cycle, you're really pushing everything out a year. The typical inflation costs, the last couple of years notwithstanding, are anywhere from three to five percent. So yes, the costs are expected to go up. You're generally, as a rule of thumb, you're, you're, you're generally in, 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 in a better off position financially by making repairs in the short term because your money will go a little bit further.
Thanks. I have another question on another element. Well, sure.
Before he goes away, just interrupt, you can turn your thing off. Why is it being recommended to take it out of the budget then?
Well, it's not really being recommended. I mean, I, I will go back and I will, I will kind of dance around the other answers that you've also been given with the, the, the proposed CIP that we brought before you in, in May, I don't recall the exact date. But we, we had two projects in there that were called out specifically to be funded with ARPA funding. One was the fiscal year twenty-five roofing replacement program. And the other was the, was the downtown project that would fund the improvements along Civic Center Drive at the sections of Second and Third. There did not seem to be a clear council consensus on that issue at that time. So rather than force the council's hand, so to speak, and put those in the budget. And if the council wanted to reconsider that, they would have to be removed. We felt that it would be a better discussion if we called those out specifically and removed those from the budget. And when we have a more general ARPA discussion, which, you know, some of that could, could occur this evening, it's easier to add projects in than it is to take them out. Both projects are, 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 are at the stage where they could easily be under contract by the end of the calendar year. So we would meet the obligations and, and the requirements of ARPA funding. But at this point, I mean, if there are other, other options and other considerations that the council would like to discuss regarding the ARPA funds, it probably makes for a more robust and holistic discussion. But certainly, there are benefits to us moving forward with both of those two projects.
And you brought up before, the Civic Center is definitely a safety, that you've had accidents there, they've hit the houses and things like that.
Yes, the, the, the improvements along Civic Center, there, there have been accidents at Second Street that hit, hit a res- a, a private residence and at Civic Center at Third have hit an office building. And as I mentioned at the previous discussions, we would also be leveraging some outside funding sources with that. That, that, that's really a project in excess of nine hundred thousand that we could bring the remaining O-BAG funds to, to, you know, we could reallocate that from the design phase to the construction phase. So in essence, it, it kind of is a, it, it could be perceived as a, as a good use of resources because you bring that six hundred twenty-five thousand back into play of, of city resources. But it also allows us to bring in also almost three hundred thousand, not quite three hundred thousand of, of O-BAG funding back to the project as well.
Thank you. More questions to talk? No, okay. Now, Dan, back to you.
Okay, yeah. The other question I had was in the presentation of, of revenue in the years ahead, there is a potential prediction of a dip in revenue that will continue into fiscal year twenty-six. That, that slope of revenue was still going down before it supposedly was going to go up again. And so you're kind of predicting less funds coming in in next year's budget before the potential for increase. So I'm wondering what the source of that information is? And how do, how do you come about that particular projection, which I know is only a projection, of course?
So can you, can you put that on the screen? Yeah. Just some purposes, we can all see what we're talking about. All right. I think this is the, the long-range projection that you were talking about. Yeah, so the red line is your expenditures, the green line is your revenue. So you see a little arrow there in the middle, fiscal year twenty-five says balanced budget. That's where we're at right now, revenues, the red and the green are on top of each other. The green should be relatively flat. But if you look at the outer years, those expenditures kind of flatten out. The red line does flatten out a little bit further out. Is, is that what you're referring to?
Well, yeah, I'm mostly referring to the fact that it's, it's still predicted to go down the next year. That we're not even talking about that budget yet. And, and it sort of begs the question, maybe we need to consider even more conservative measures of saving money and cutting back on expenses if in fact the prediction is that the income for the following year's budget is going to be lower than what it is this year.
Yeah, it's, it, it's, we're not really projecting much difference next year. I know visibly you're seeing what's happening is this, this year we're showing a one percent decrease from the prior year. So you can see where that red line in fiscal year twenty-four kind of paralle- overlaps that green line. That's a one percent, that's the one percent decrease you're seeing this year. And if the revenues are, if that continues and showing an additional one percent going out, we're hoping that that changes by looking at revenue measures from things. We hope to affect those trend lines. And the other thing that we would do is if those trend lines are, is that we would look at doing cuts across the board of five to eight percent, probably five to ten percent, somewhere in that range. So where you see that balanced budget arrow right there, you would see that drop down below the sixty-five million dollar mark. That red line drops straight down. And then even projected to continue out in the future years, it would still remain below that green line if we took corrective actions. Either to increase the green lineup. Either to increase the green lineup, and if that can't happen, we have to move the red line down. Um, and that that's something that we've talked about with the exec team and we'll be looking at, not just waiting uh until mid-year to decide that. We'll be flushing that out in the next couple of months of what that scenario would look like so that we can articulate both to the council and the public uh what sacrifices have to be made in the future if we can't raise additional.
That answers my initial questions. I'll have some comments later, of course.
Okay.
Yeah, question. Uh, yeah, I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding regarding the hiring freeze that that did not include the unhoused specialists because that was like we have grant funding for that. Am I understanding that correctly? That that's still going forward? Okay, great. I think that's it for now.
Okay, um, my turn. Page two twenty three Economic Development Bullet Two states that branding, we would begin potential branding and promotion of Dell and McGlinsey. But in our conversations with the Economic Development Committee and with you, Brian, branding is for the whole city and that's gonna happen here the next month or two. So is that statement, should that be changed? Page two twenty three Bullet Two. Page two twenty three of the packet Economic Development Bullet Two, begin work on potential branding and promotion of Dell McGlinsey. But isn't it the branding is what we need to do for the city?
Yes, this is. Thank you.
Because my understanding from you is we're bringing the topic of branding up here the next month or two. And then page two twenty nine. Two twenty nine. Okay, so on page two twenty nine, there's two bullets I want to bring to your attention. Bullet five, implement water conserva- oops, in implement water conservation strategies, including turf and irrigation controller upgrades. So um I mentioned this, I think, in our workshop over Q eighty about that we're the orchard city and we have no orchards anywhere in the city. I think Brocker's property has four or five trees. And um is there, and then also and also highlight um the Climate Action Plan does also talk about water conservation. So what I ask is if we would be able to look at where an orchard could go if we take turf out somewhere. So we can truly be the Orchard City. Since it's on our seal.
I I would defer that question to the council on whether or not that's a work plan they want us to pursue. Uh, I think if there's a will, there's a way. I think there's some cost and there's internal resources that is staffing this. So I I think maybe if there's council interest, we can have the Public Works Director come up and talk about capacity uh and the prioritization of that over other things and whether or not it's appropriate.
Well, if we're gonna take lawn out underwater conservation, then we can get grants like we did for the first part. So it's more of a workload issue than a priority statement.
I would imagine there's turf conversion grants out there. It doesn't pay the full cost, but I, the way I would see it, I'm looking at Todd, maybe you want to come up. I I certainly see an internal resource issue. Uh, but like I said, if that's a priority of the council, we we would just want to be able to articulate it. What wouldn't get done if we were gonna do that project?
Yes, that's a very interesting question. So thank you for that one. Um.
I always have good ones, Todd, for you.
Um, our previous turf conversion projects were largely funded by grants, grants to Valley Water. And as you know, as as you know, uh, the Valley Water Grants are somewhat specific on what what can replace the turf and still be grant eligible. They are typically calling out drought tolerant, which is not the same as native. We 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 do know that.
That conversation.
Um, but orchard trees would not likely qualify under their program. So what's that?
Some do.
Some do. Okay, well, then I will commit to you that when we do our next one, we will look at that.
Apricots.
I should also point out to you that I think we do have some, it may be a very small number, but we do have some orchard trees around the community garden at Edith Morley.
Dan said that, yeah.
Given me a head nod on that one. So we have a little bit out there and and that may be a site that that maybe we can expand a little bit. But at this point, we don't uh we don't have a project per se in the CIP to do that. But I think we can do, we can certainly look into that as we do some of our turf conversion projects going into fiscal year twenty five.
Great. Good answer. All right, um, page two twenty eight. Um, under land development, the third bullet says coordination with community development facilitate construction of the remaining semi-permanent parklets, but you took the money out. So is that still a bullet under land development? Because it says of the remaining parklets for.
I I believe that some funding was left uh of the ARPA allocation that would allow up to two additional part, was it one or two additional parklets to come forward? I thought it was two, but we were aware of one. I may have my numbers wrong. But i- if there are additional parklets that come forward, we would we, you know, we would have land development, review them along with community development. But at this point, that I think there's only one other business that's considering submitting an application. So that would, I mean.
I thought we took the forty thousand dollars out of.
We reduced the amount is my understanding.
So there still is some money.
There's forty thousand remaining for one um for one facility and we've given them till the end of October to decide whether they're interested.
But you're taking forty thousand out of the budget. So there's an additional forty thousand that's still in ARPA?
There's forty thousand remaining, yeah, of ARPA money for that one business.
Okay, that's the miso soup, miso.
Yeah, they they've already previously applied and during the process they had to put a pause on it. So we're giving them a period of time to see if they'll.
Not miso, um, brandy, sushi, rand.
And commit to the council and I think it's fair to reach out one more time to businesses and and um, uh, make a push. Uh, but at some point that ARPA money will go away. We can certainly process them. But that's ARPA subsidy. We're gonna have to decide what to do with that money sooner than later. If there's interest, we can certainly consider that when we come back with the ARPA discussion uh between now and then. We will make one more push. There's been some new businesses and see if there's any undertakers, if the council's interested.
Yeah, because we've had new businesses and we talked about leaving it open to new businesses.
And we we can do that. The council's interested. Uh, I hear you on that. Uh, and before we bring back to our discussion, we can at least check businesses one more time, make sure.
Okay, any more questions? No, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on the budget? I'll jump up at one time here. All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing and bring it back to council for comments or motion. Let's start down here with Elliot. Okay, Dan.
Okay. Well, um, first of all, I noticed over the last, you know, several few years, um, our revenue has been declining some. And um, so of course, uh, our revenue this year, of course, uh, has declined a little bit once again. And I realize that, as you pointed out, of course, uh, the deficit created uh has been about three point eight eight billion, which uh is you've clearly spelled out how you propose to to balance that so that we do, of course, have a balanced budget. And then I know um we are in fact looking at potential ways to increase our revenue uh in terms of potentially putting something on the ballot and taking it to the voters in the election. Of course, we don't know if that'll be successful. We certainly hope it would. And uh, but still, I I think we're still kind of cutting things rather thin. I I'm a little concerned. I know there is a sort of a backup proposal, uh, at least in the discussion phase that uh we would then consider asking each department to cut by a certain percentage. Uh, and that is kind of right now being proposed as just sort of a potential option in the future. Uh, frankly, I I'm a little concerned. Um, you know, as was mentioned earlier, we used quite a bit of our uh PERS Reserve Fund to fund the PERS deficit that we were stuck with this year, surprisingly. Uh, if something like that comes along again, that will just wipe out the PERS Reserve Fund. And I'm just thinking that we should, we should consider, I think, making some cuts in this budget or not that we would decide which items. I don't think that's so appropriate. But that we would ask department heads to go back and cut by a small percentage so that we could begin saving some money and just giving us a little more cushion since we're not sure uh what's going to happen uh either in terms of any other emergencies, in terms of how successful we are with the revenue enhancement project. And I just think we're sort of very close to the edge. So I, it's kind of one of my considerations that I would ask all of you to consider that we begin cutting back a little bit now and uh not not holding things so close. Um, some of our reserve funds are definitely, I think, uh, you know, there's been discussion about combining reserve funds. I'd like to have a further discussion about that at some time in the future. Uh, but I am still concerned that the reserves are not at the level uh that we think they should be to give at least me a sort of a more comfortable feeling that we can handle things. So those are my preliminary comments.
Yeah, I mean, I just think about how a city operates and Dan, I agree with you that, you know, we should be ahead of the game, you know, that maybe there needs, I hate to say it, but, you know, cuts here and there, things that where, especially if we feel like, oh, you know, like this this department's doing okay right now, like we should certainly not be, you know, for lack of a better description, buying any new toys and stuff. Uh, I also think that it is really important infrastructure, you know, besides operating budget. Infrastructure for me is like the very next thing, you know, so I feel that that we should, you know, if we're gonna put money, more money into anything, it should be things that people can see, you know, like we're talking about the new roofs and, you know, possibly the road here that got taken off recently. Um, and then, but then I also want us not to forget the the services that that the city provides. And then maybe there are some opportunities, like, like I know it's on end word, I I can feel the vibes up here that we're all like, oof, we gotta we gotta be realistic, but you know, I saw that, I mean, we talked about last time, the potential of the UBI if we had uh, you know, a chunk of change left over, but we might not have that. I would love to do that, absolutely love to because, you know, so much uh, it has such positive results and, you know, and especially with ARPA funds, you know, it was meant to get us through the pandemic. And one fact that people don't repeat enough about the post pandemic is, you know, these statistics like approximately sixty percent of, you know, mom and pop businesses are gone and not coming back, you know, that's a huge devastation, in my opinion. Um, there's a lot more people struggling every day that goes by, more and more people struggling. So I want us to not forget, not lose focus on those that are struggling in our community and see where we might be able to directly affect them, you know. I feel like what's the point of having a city if we can't take care of our residents, you know, like that. So don't lose sight of that. And I know it sounds easier said than done, but or but yeah, number one operating budget, obviously, but infrastructure and and remembering, you know, those struggling in our community. So those are my comments. I hope that we can find something. But I I want to double down, double down on what Dan was saying about that, that, yeah, we we maybe definitely need to, you know, like I saw that line and it is kind of like, whoa, I mean, I know it's five years, you know, of that, well, not quite, not quite. Hopefully we get more revenue. We're all hoping and praying for that, of course, but but yeah, I don't like that that line that I've seen, I'm not sure it there.
So I'll begin with the ARPA funding and I I really think it's important, um, we're running out of time basically to to um identify projects that maybe council um has some priority in wanting to implement with what's being recommended. But um I I think we need to make some kind of a decision tonight or provide some direction on on how we're gonna use those funds. And possibly um the surplus that we might have. And so I'm I'm gonna refer to the council report um and the the parklet program. I I think that we should um retain eighty thousand dollars in in that um fund. There's a uh reason that I know that there's one restaurant who uh which may very well um want to apply, but there there's some legal challenges there and it's deferred their ability to to apply. We also have a new restaurant in town that has indicated that they might be interested in in applying for for a parklet. So I I think that um that is a benefit to the community um and we should allow uh if if two restaurants want to be added, I I and I understand that we need to put a a deadline on it, but I think that we should at least give those restaurants an opportunity to uh participate or say they want to participate if if they have that ability. Um, I also would like to continue with the um contract at Per Clinician. Um, I it wasn't really covered in the staff report. That was a priority that was identified a year ago. And I was really disappointed to to learn that that hasn't been implemented. Um, but obviously there's some challenges with that with not not city uh constraints, but more county. And I think that's um a a a project and a and a service to our community that is really a of an appropriate use of ARPA funds that our citizens could benefit from. So I'd like to see that continue. Um, short of identifying um the the a a project for the use of the remaining funds, I would support the 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 two um CIP projects um with priority given to the uh roof replacement. And the second priority would be the PDA um enhancements. That would be my my recommendation. Um, I have some concerns about the full recommendation for the um economic development um support. The total amount, I think, is over almost five hundred thousand dollars. I know that we just completed a a plan and we have um a phased implementation of that, but the council hasn't had any discussion about how we're gonna implement that and what's what's priority. And so I I think that the most important part is getting a person, an employee on on board, the manager or whatever position it turns out to be and allowing that person to um settle in and and have some input into the priorities that of how how the plan is gonna be implemented. So I I I would support some funding for that, but I think that it really requires more of a council um discussion on on if we really want to spend five hundred thousand dollars of ARPA to implement that. Um, let's see, uh. And then um in the work plan items, one of the items that was um suggested by community development uh was the um uh purs- stat- or pursuing um a cold weather shelter in Campbell. Again, to me, that's a would be um something that would be worthy of ARPA funds, um, at least to get the ball rolling, at least to get initiate a study. Um, it it involves, you know, various departments. It also involves county and and um other jurisdictions. But I I think that's worthy. Um, if it's in their work plan and there's funds available, I think that we should at least try and begin with um getting some consulting um assistance on that. And then on the PD work plan, on the uh contract for the uh employment help, I I I support that. I I appreciate the clarification that was made on the amount. It was confusing to me. Um, I do think it's been an effective tool. It's a very difficult climate right now to be um hiring people, um hiring officers, um dispatchers, um public sector employees in general, and it it sounds like the first year has been successful. Um, I think it takes more than one one year to determine the success of the program and so I'm willing to support it again for another year with the um condition that we do look at it again in the next budget cycle to see if if it can be reduced. Hopefully, in the meantime, our staffing levels will will stabilize and um will be fully staffed more on paper uh in in person more than on just paper, chief. Um, and then the final comment I have and it's it's in the work plan, um, the public works work plan item, it's on the traffic calming policy. Uh, we've had discussion at the council about that. I I personally um feel that that's not a priority with all of the other priorities that staff has to do. It it's in this fiscal year um budget and is proposed in the the twenty five budget. And so I I would like to have some kind of a discussion as to whether or not this was a priority and either leave it in or take it out. But if if staff hasn't had the ability to do it this year, I I don't know that it's um that there's there's bandwidth. I, I don't know that it's, that there's, there's bandwidth to do that in the, in the upcoming year with all the other priorities that are happening. So those are my initial comments.
Great, well, thanks, Dan, for all the work, and I appreciate my colleagues' thoughtful and comprehensive comments, I'm, I'm gonna try to both address what's been said and, and then lay out some of my own thoughts, but I'll start with just the general principle, which was what was coming up my questions to, to Brian while we're asking questions, which is that I, I, what, whatever decisions we make, I think should be driven strategically, should be driven by, by priorities. And where I think that could be a helpful principle is, is when you're talking about specific costs and trade-offs, there is something that, that might be, you know, you might say, let's reduce by a certain number, the actual impact on whether it's, it's growth, the revenue or services or whatever, the, the value that you're getting out of that number may be greater than the actual number that's going down, so I just, I just want to make sure that, that there's a correlation between any corrective actions that we take and, and the impact that has on, on residents. Basically, I think a shorter way of saying what I just said is, I don't want to be penny wise and pound foolish, just with, with any of the decisions we take. So, one, I'll address something that, that was brought up by, by a couple of my, my colleagues that has, has been on my mind too, that I'm not ready to move to tonight, but that I, I want to start to think about, which is about corrective actions for, for this cycle. I think it would have been helpful to have some of that discussion and some of that work a little bit earlier, but I also recognize that that is a major effort by staff that takes a lot of coordination among and between the departments, and so I'm glad that we're moving to that. What I would feel comfortable with at, at this stage is absolutely saying, let's prioritize doing some of that work and some of that thinking, so that we, we're not putting all our eggs in the basket of a potential revenue measure, but just really looking holistically, and also just looking at, go back to my initial comment, looking at the costs and trade-offs, and, and really thinking about why we're asking the public for, for more money, it's, you know, it's because of these priorities that, that really serve our residents. So at this point, I, I would say, let's, let's, let's start exploring that path, just because I think more information, more holistic data will, will be helpful no matter what we end up deciding. But I, I think if, if we need to do a mid-year budget correction, that for me right now is where I would feel comfortable making any of those actions if, if we need to. And, and, and part of that is just because I, I don't wanna, just at, at this place where we're up against the timeline of implementation of, of the budget, I, I don't wanna have arbitrary targets for, for cuts across departments or across the organization that maybe end up setting back some, some priorities that, that we have, or, or losing momentum on, on a point of work that's being done. So, so that, that would be my initial thought, even though I, I, I couldn't agree more of just the importance of, of having those discussions. I will, I'll, I'll turn to the, the ARPA discussion now, and, and Todd, I appreciate you being polite and dancing around things, it's okay, you can point, point the finger. I, but I, I was, you know, I, I did appreciate at the last meeting, just the support for having a, a more, my intent was to have a more holistic discussion around this topic, it really is not a comment on those particular capital projects. I, I would say, just, I'll say one, those are, are very good projects that should get funded. I will say that if I could wave a wand and go back earlier, I would have liked to have earlier discussions about ARPA strategy or something, I've, I've said a number of times, and ultimately, I feel the intent of it was probably more to do, at least looking at what, what other cities did to, to really do services, one-time actions, pilot, you know, we saw a lot of pilot programs in response to the hardships that we saw as, as a result of the pandemic and ensuing, taking a more broader view, ensuing economic, precisely, we're, we're still seeing that, and, and some of, you know, the, so now, you know, I think of things like economic development, that's, those are things where we're still feeling the ripple effects. And, and so, you know, if I could go back and, and wave a wand, I, I would have probably liked to find other sources for things like capital projects that I think we, we should be doing anyway, but I recognize that, that we're not there, and, and I recognize that everything we do is, is a, is a compromise, and, and, and staff is just trying to get the best work done to, to serve our residents. So, so at this point, and, and, and I appreciate you getting more specific with your comments, I, I do think we need to have, to, to start to give some real direction and narrow down the, the ARPA options. How'd we get at this point with putting back the, the two capital projects? Having had more of this discussion, but, but I, I will say, an important principle for me is, is still with, with the remaining funds, is how can we really be responsive to hardship in our community, do things that we may not normally be able to do? And so, and I'm, I'm definitely open to some of the ideas that, that you brought up for some of the remaining ARPA funds, you know, I, I, I think, I, I, I could see putting in eighty thousand dollars because there's a very direct connection to economic development, and, and some of that originally came out of the, the need for more outdoor spaces and, and supporting our, our businesses. So I think, I think that would be a reasonable initial step. There are three ideas that I would like to propose for staff, because I think at this point we need to look at things that are gonna be quickest, where we can kind of piggyback on, on, onto an existing program that another agency is doing, or, or pick up a model, and things with the lowest administrative costs, and, and that's probably never gonna be zero, but, you, you know, at least the lowest relative cost in, in terms of implementing something new. And, and so there, there's three things that come to mind for me that I would just like to explore in, in, in the, the coming weeks and months, because we are running a business against the deadline for ARPA funds. One would be to have conversations with the county about whether there are basic income programs that they have started, where we, we could allocate funding specific for Campbell residents and maybe really address a specific need. So this would not be a universal basic income project, but what the county has been doing, a lot of it led by Dave Cortezzi and, and what Dave, our, our state senator has been doing in the state senate, based off of his experience at the county, is allocating very targeted funding for things like foster youth, people transitioning, people right on the edge of, of homelessness. And, and I've, I just personally, just from seeing the results of these programs, I, 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 I think that is a, a, a more effective model at this point than doing, than administering a truly universal randomized program, because you can really almost wipe out the, the specific problems in the community. You look at things like veteran homelessness, those, those are all things that have been considered. So I, I don't know the precise details of what the county's doing, where the needs are, but I'd like to just explore, have those discussions, to see if, if, if we could allocate some funding, and it may not be large overall, but it may have a huge impact for those people who are affected, and, and, you know, I, I would love it to say, if we could say that we eliminated X in our community that, that people are struggling with, I think that's something that would be possible to kind of scale the remaining funds that are going. The other thing, kind of in that vein, would be that I'd like us to talk to Los Gatos about what they did with addressing shelter for the unhoused in Inclamant Weather. They, they were apparently able to do it with very, very low administrative costs, and so just, I, 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 I think that's probably as close as you're gonna get in apples-to-apples comparison in terms of the resources that they had with, with staff and, and experience to, to work with, so I'd like to explore that. And then, third would be seeing whether we, we can fund some portion of the economic development work, and, and that could be just the increase in cost with moving to, to, to manager. But that goes back just to my initial comment about the, the strategy, which is, and, and a comment I made at the, the last time we, we had a budget discussion, which is that if we can grow the revenue and, and, and not just, you know, that, that may be a, a small amount of increased expenditures that, if, you know, if it results in just one, you, larger business coming in or retaining businesses, I think those are structural things that could really impact the budget in positive ways, and I don't want to see us lose momentum on, on, on that front by, by, by deferring some of, some of that work. And, and, and in somewhat of a similar vein, you know, I, I agree with the importance of the PERT technician, I, I, I think there's challenges there administratively with, with the county, but I, I just, I, I think these are some of the ideas that should be on the table at this point. So hopefully that helps narrow it down, those are things that I, I hope would be achievable, and I know we can't do all of them, but, but just, you know, the next couple of months is where really figuring out how to close out this fund, those are the things I, I think, you know, I, I would like to see us talk about.
Thank you. So let me, I've heard from two people so far about the roofing. Where are you guys at with the roofing, keep it in the budget? The re-roofing number? Okay, so I support the re-roofing number, and I would actually even add money, because I'm hearing the roofs are bad, and I've been on the campaign for eight years about facility long-term planning, and once the roof leaks, it ruins the building, you get into drywall and everything else, so I would much rather repair the roofs now, I would even say go to five hundred thousand and be proactive and take care of more roofs, but, so we all support the roof.
Well, it's like, where's the money coming from?
The ARPA.
Oh, so you're suggesting?
A little more, five hundred instead of the three, but you all do support the roof project, okay, as it stands.
If we're gonna add it back in, then we need to sort of propose a source of funds for it.
It's the ARPA money.
Yeah. And, but then there are so many proposals for the ARPA money, that we have, you know, we have a limited amount of that, so we should.
Okay, well, let me finish what I want to support, I just, I had two for the roof, I was for the roof, you guys are for the roof, so that is one to put in the discussion of what goes into the ARPA money. The second one is the second and third at Civic Center Drive, we've had accidents there, we can get up to three hundred in grants, did you guys, I think you both supported, you supported that one, Dan?
I supported to the extent that we don't come up with other uses for the ARPA money.
Okay, and same thing, so you supported as long as we have the whole ARPA conversation, the Civic Center and the second and third? If that would be still in the mix for you?
Oh, sure, I mean, I think it's important, but.
Okay, and then, Ann had mentioned up increasing the Parklets to eighty thousand. I do support keeping the PERT, P E R T, position, the clinician. I think, you know, our, one of our, one of our things we've talked about over the years is mental health, so I think that's extremely important. Economic development is a big deal, and if we're going to need more revenue, to me, the Economic Development Department and that effort, to me, is one of the ways to get more money. We do have Leslie, she was renewed in her contract, we had the whole topic of branding, which then gives us the image to then add to economic development, but I really want to keep that moving forward, just like Sergio said, we've got some momentum going, and to me, that's one of the best ways to try to bring in new businesses, to have that person coordination and that effort, okay, economic development. Regarding the, there's listed here under Table Five on two eleven and two twelve, other potential ARPA uses, since we have to encumber the money by December, I have serious doubts that we could address a universal basic income program because of the research that would be needed, the valuation that would be needed, the establishment of a program, how do you rate people, how do you give it, then implementing the program, getting applicant, I just don't see that happening before December as a program, because it's very complicated. I do see a much better opportunity, like Sergio had said, about looking what Los Gatos did about the shelter in Inclamant Weather, so I would support that one, that's on page two eleven, twelve. I would support the hotel voucher program for the unhoused, those to me are two easy ones that could be dealt with by December, buying down the risk below market rate units, I'm not sure how long that would take, if that's gonna take at least the six months to, to figure that out, I don't know that we can encumber it for that expenditure. Okay, so that's that one, that's that one, that's that one. Ann also brought up about traffic calming, this has been a big one that I hear a lot about from various people all over the city, is that they collected all the signatures, got the plan in, and they found out they didn't qualify, so the idea with this traffic calming program was to reevaluate the criteria, to try to be able to get more people to have traffic calming, but we didn't get to it last year, so that, to me, I would like to keep it, but if it's something we're not gonna be able to get to, then we might as well take it out of the list. And then I do support looking at corrective actions to the budget. I do think we need to be saving now, looking ahead, what, what can we cut? And, and what would we, you know, what can we do? We don't necessarily have to decide tonight what those corrective actions are going to be, but I would like to see as we move into the fiscal year, that we start talking about twenty-six, and how corrections we can be making, where, where we can start cutting. So I think that's all of the things that everybody brought up, Parklets. Okay, so now, what do you want, do you want us to?
Let me just, if I can clarify on the ARPA usage, is it the council's intent? I, I hear all the things that we would support or not support, priorities of those, and we've taken careful notes. We quickly are gonna spend that one point four million with all of those things we just talked about, and we'll be in a position where we come back and discuss and say, we can't do anything else. But it seems to me, the sense of what I'm getting is council is just sharing with us their feedback on those, we'll have a whole holistic discussion on those, we can add those CIP projects, the roofing projects, those other things back in, but my sense is if we do that first, you're gonna be left with very little left of that ARPA money, and not have that more holistic discussion, so. Is, is, is the council's wish to us come back, have that ARPA discussion, and fund those later? Or you, if you want us to move forward with some of those projects? Clearly, Parklets is, is not a big expense, but the, the, I'm just looking at the numbers, the roofing project is a large number, that was three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in the PDA enhancements or something. So if we were to go ahead and do that for your next budget adoption in June, that's a billion of that, it's one point four million, it's gonna not leave you more than probably four hundred thousand dollars. And I just want to be clear to the council, I also wanted to clarify the comments on the PERT commission, I should have clarified this earlier, that late last week, we found out from the county that there may be some grant funds available to put this position, and we were given first priority for this, fully for, I believe, two years of expenses, I'm looking at Gary to confirm that, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't take ARPA money as is shown in there. So that is the positive news, but the PDA improvement that we talked about on Second Street and Third Street, and the roof replacement at Civic Center is about it.
And the last time in May, when you came for us, they were in the budget, and there was about three hundred left over, which is where the UBI unhoused all came out, so by putting them back, it would be back to where we were.
I just want to be clear of, of what the council's intentions are, and we can certainly have that discussion, you heard from our Public Works Director that the CIP projects aren't easy enough to add in later, they're easier to add in than it was to leave them in there, take them out later. And we're okay with that discussion, I just wanted to make sure that's where the council was with that, or if we should go forward and do what happens back.
Okay, I see people wanting to ask questions, so let me just, I think we need to have a bigger discussion about ARPA, because we're trying to get the budget approved. I agree with the pulling the two projects out, we do have support of the two projects based on the further conversation of ARPA, so to move it forward tonight, to be able to get to the eighteenth, then I think we should have the bigger conversation of all these ARPA ways to divide up the money. And did you want to comment, Dan?
Getting back on the PERT position, I, I think, if I'm correct, we'd allocated about a hundred and eighty thousand for that, but you had come back and said that the cost now, from the county's point of view, bumps it up another fifty grand, so it's like two hundred and thirty. So all I'm saying is, you know, I support all these things, but the point is, I don't know, think that we have enough money to do it, and if we're talking about the need to cut back and sort of be very conservative with our budget this year, because we don't know what's happening, I mean, except for the ARPA money, which we could sort of commit, I, I don't know how we can afford a lot of these other things. commit, uh, I don't know how we can afford a lot of these other things, uh, even though I support them.
So let me just clarify real clear on the perk. We're withdrawing the request for funding for this perk clinician, but we are being told late last week by the county that they will fund it for us with grant funds.
Like the entire amount?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
That was a surprise. That was late last week, and I meant to mention that in my introduction, so I apologize.
Yes, we received that information from the county late last week and they offered it to us. We accepted that offer and there's no end date for that funding. But as I've discussed with the city manager, just to make clear, we're excited about this, especially now that the county is paying for it and it's not coming out of our general fund. It, we do need to evaluate it because it is going to require a full-time police officer to be partnered with that perk clinician. So when we talk about staffing levels, that then while it's a very important resource, it then takes a, an officer away from another assignment. So that's one of the things I just want to make completely clear to council that it's going to be an evaluation process. It's great that it's free, but we need to look at how if the benefit that we're getting from that offsets that lack of a patrol officer that we're taking off the street.
Is it my understanding that our Campbell, uh, police officers actually have additional training that's very similar to, uh, the per clinician, like, like more so than, uh, a lot of, at least nationally, like, you know, that there's additional training that we have here in Campbell that to respond to psychiatric events and that nature?
So all of our police officers in Campbell receive CIT training, which is crisis intervention, uh, training, which is specific to addressing mental health, um, related calls. There is a very specific difference between that forty-hour training and a per clinician, which is a licensed therapist who works for the county and is not a police officer, doesn't have any training in tactics, but is a licensed therapist who has been trained to to deal with, uh, mental health crises. So it's a combination of those two that has shown success.
And so just to follow up, uh, having, uh, obviously an officer with the per clinician, would it be able to, would the, uh, police department be able to pair someone that's just on patrol? Would that be an easy insert where it's like we're not adding an actual another, you know, salaried, uh, police officer position?
Ideally, from what we've seen on other agencies who've used this, um, the type of response that works best is a non-uniformed police officer driving unmarked police cars. So we're taking, while there's still a gun-carrying police officer, they wouldn't be wearing a uniform and available to respond for daily calls of service. They would be a-attached specifically to these type of mental health calls and our health services, so. There definitely will leave a gap. I'm hoping that we'll be able to absorb that, but it'll be an evaluation process.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Take a page two ten, the pending balance with the projects for the projects that we've identified is one point four or five hundred ninety, ninety, fifty-nine thousand dollars. If we apply the nine hundred and ninety thousand that's recommended on the following page to those four priorities, that leaves approximately four hundred and seventy thousand dollars left in ARPA, and that does not include either of the CIP projects. That have been.
That back, that would include those CIP projects, those are.
It would?
It's three hundred and seventy-five in CIP, six twenty-five for the Campbell PDA enhancements.
So I don't see that the money's in there.
Those are where you get the operating budget. This is the amount of money. And so, the council will take, well, good if you get that, the budget just disappears. We try to find things. Who's things are getting from?
So I guess my, my question is, what is the remaining balance of ARPA? That we have to work with for discretionary, um, income? Okay. In a, in additional for, for a program?
I, I just want to get back to Brian's original, the question, um. Suzanne, I think, I think you said it perfectly in your response in terms of what would be helpful moving forward, the, the way I see it, I, I would agree. Come back to us and what I would add and ask for is with a ranking of the ideas that you've heard, some amount of consensus on. Come back so we can have the discussion. I want to be clear that the, I think the capital projects are good ones and they should be in the mix. I don't think any of us are saying let's put all these things in the budget right now, that that's just, absolutely, yeah. So, so yes, let's come back and just have that discussion. I'm just trying to be mindful of keeping things moving and and not holding them.
Thank you. And that's a, Ray, I read the discussion. I just wanted to make sure there was ample clarity before we brought back a budget for adoption that wasn't what I expected.
So based on, do you have comments or questions?
So if we did what was just said, uh, that would leave any money for the proposal you indicated about, you know, enhancing the economic development position and branding and and things like that, so.
Now, the, the, if you look at page two eleven.
Be more clear, we're, you're operating, we're asking you to support your operating by a million dollars and we've heard the council say it would be nice that for ARPA money, we're able to articulate to the public the benefit of that million dollars. We could say the ARPA money, that million dollars is going to the operating budget, it's being lost with our other sixty-seven million dollars of expenditures. But I don't, doesn't achieve that purpose. So we pulled out of your budgets of things that we could show that the ARPA money was supporting for that million dollars. It's not additional funding that we're looking for, that's already included in there, that's being covered by the billion dollars of ARPA money spent on the operating.
So we've made up that amount of money.
No, and I'm sorry for, for that confusion. We probably tried too hard to be helpful and come up with what's in your operating budget that could help the public. Your money was well spent.
And, and if, if I, if I could just make a quick comment, the reason why I'm asking for a ranking is a recognition that we can't do everything. And so just come back and have the, those priorities.
Because UBI is listed as one of the potentials, can we get that done by December? Can we allocate it, get the whole program, figure out who's getting the, you know, so when you come back with the ranking, to be part of that ranking is, is this was going to take a lot of time, can we do it? To me, because that would help me evaluate the ranking.
I think the only thing that we would have to evaluate more and whether there's an existing program, we could easily quickly leverage either through the county or through another city. And we, we could explore that.
When you come back with the ranking, to me, we need to say that, like you've already mentioned, the, that Los Gatos has a shelter in inclement weather that we can tag on to. We can get that done by December, but if you don't think we could get done a UBI program, then.
That will be part of the.
That's part of this ranking.
Correct.
And, and regarding that, I just think I just wanted to double down on what Vice Mayor LaFell said, that I think that's, uh, absolutely what we should do is not necessarily a UBI program, although I would, of course, love to see if we can do that, but uh, focus on already pre-existing programs, let the county, they've already done most of the work and just ride that train to success and help the people that need the help the most, and the people in our community that need the most help. And I think that's, that's the way we should go. I think we shouldn't abandon it at all. We should, we should really try and do this. I think it would be really important. You know, and, uh, and so, yes, I, I just want to double down on what the vice mayor said.
Right, so the idea is the ranking and understanding what that ranking, can we get it done by the end of the year? Okay, so based on everything I've heard, I don't see any big changes to what you're proposing on the budget. You haven't added, we haven't added any, the only thing I've added is ask if we can look at when we do turf conversion, we put in orchard trees. That's the only thing I've heard. Uh, Ann, I'm sorry, you mentioned taking traffic calming out. But everything else, we've, we haven't said anything else.
Well, we, if we add back in the two items in the CIPR.
But we're not doing that tonight because that's part of the ARPA discussion. Right? And they pulled it out so that we can have the ARPA. So I'm trying to get to a vote tonight on the budget. I'm not hearing anybody, Ann, saying take traffic calming out.
Well, and that requires a vote of the council, so is that a priority of this council? And I think we need to say a or nay to that.
Okay, so let's do that. Do you support keeping traffic calming in the list?
Well, I'm conflicted on this. Obviously, we want to save money wherever we can, but then I do remember not that long ago, I don't know, a few months back, there was, uh, those ladies that came in specifically, and there are, I do hear, just like you said, I that is something I hear regularly. It's like, oh, my God, people are blazing up and down my street, you know, so. Uh, you know, if we're listening to the people who live here, I would say that we shouldn't just sweep it under the, under the rug necessarily, but maybe we can work with it, maybe we don't have to be like, you know, one hundred percent for it, but I don't, I don't think we should throw it out.
Well, I mean, I think traffic calming is important, but it's a very nebulous, how do you address that? And, you know, how the personnel, you, you know, enforce that, if you will. People do crazy things. Sometimes they drive fast and sometimes they drive slow. I mean, there may be strategies for us to help do that, but I just don't know how we can do it. And, and to sort of tie a program like that into, translated into money and how, what would the money do and how much would we need, it's, it's just sort of. I, I think it should be with all the other things we're trying to do, I don't see how we can do this as well.
So the traffic calming topic on the CIP is originally, we allocated like fifty grand a year, but then projects weren't qualifying, so this item is to reevaluate the policy to see if more people qualify. It was a program reevaluation is what the traffic calming work item was. So take it out? As a work plan?
Of all the priorities, I would put it down.
Okay.
Um, I support keeping it. I think the direction from past councils also, um, has been clear and I, I, I think, I think it's worthy of, uh, discussion, so I appreciate bringing it up, but I just see it as a very fundamental public safety issue that affects all sorts of, of folks in, in our community. So from that standpoint, so it's a high priority.
Okay, so we have high priority, high priority, keep it in, put it as a low priority.
Well, you're using words that I don't know that I would use the exact words, but, you know, we can't do everything, so that's what I'm trying to.
So we're trying to figure out, keep it in or take it out. I have Sergio and I are strongly keep it in. Elliot's saying keep it in, Ann's saying take it out, so right now it's three to one, and they they're going for or two?
I just don't see this as a final discussion, but I, as I said, I, I think the other priorities we've identified right now should take precedence.
Okay, but keep it in the work items. Just make it a low priority within the work item.
That's what they for sure.
Okay, and then the idea that I had of converting when we, when we convert turf, look at where we could put orchard trees. I don't see that as a big work item per se, as if there, it's if they are doing the turf conversions, that could be an option. Okay.
Is that something that could be looked at in, in the park master plan?
Yeah, that was the other thing I was thinking. Natasha's shaking her head yes. So that could be where that fall, I would be fine with that.
And I'll just, I'll just make a comment. I mean, I I just don't see the value of putting work plan items that aren't going to be accomplished. And, and, and we really need to identify what's important, what our priorities are, and, you know, we're, we're facing a budget deficit. We don't have the resources to do all this. And so what, what good does it have? Um, to have a work plan item at the end of the year, it hasn't been even addressed. I, I, I just, I don't understand that as, as a council member.
And, and again, one thing was if and when, because we have two items that both have water conservation as listed as their items, and this is a way to deal with what, when you take the turf out, what you put in. So it's already work plan items, it's an add-on to the two of them.
Again, I, I, I think it maybe should, it should be discussed in the, in the park master plan, but it's not, to me, it's not a priority. Okay.
Uh, I think the parks master plan is, is a great way to do that. I don't think we need to add a new work plan item. Like you said, staff has heard feedback and it's going to be considered, um, if, if that comes up.
Well, I'm, I'm fine then if we add it to the park master plan. So other than that, are we ready to make a motion on the budget? Yeah, we have to have a. An item here is the city Campbell review the proposed fiscal year operating budget as provide direction to staff. So do we need to vote on this?
Uh, we do need to establish June eighteenth as the date for the public hearing and the adoption of the operated CIP budget as well as the GAN appropriations.
Okay, so we do need to read this and make this motion.
That's only to set the date for, for your budget, but it's not.
It is a motion.
Yeah, just a motion to set that date. You provide a direction. So the motion that would be appropriate is the council established June eighteen, two thousand twenty-four as the date for a public hearing and adoption of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five operating budget at CIP as well as the GAN appropriations.
So moved.
Got it, so moved. Do we have a second? We have a second by Elliot's.
Can I, oh, one discussion, one of the things that I heard, um, discussed here is, um, going back and making more cuts and reducing expenditures. And I don't know, is that an expectation that this, of this council, that that's what you want to have by the budget adoption?
No, not that. My, my understanding is that's what we're going to start doing after the budget's agreed, that we're going to be looking into the next fiscal year.
I was a big excuse.
Start it now.
Okay, that's why we're, she's asking for.
I mean, I haven't identified an amount, but I just feel we should include this, uh, in this year's budget.
Can I, can I maybe make a recommendation? Sorry, council member might be outside of town, so I'll hold mine until.
Well, I, I mean, I think it's, I think staff, from my, my conversations with staff, that they've done a job, a good job of, of reducing expenditures where they can across the board. So I, I'm confident that that's happened. Um, I just think it's a little late to be coming back to, with alternative or, or additional, um, expenditure reductions, but, but I also know that we, we have a structural problem and we need to address it. And we're, we're, we're proposing a budget based on, um, you know, one-time revenues and a lot of assumptions that we're going to maybe have a revenue measure, um, but it's not guaranteed. We're not sure how much money that's going to, so we do need to really buckle down and, and seriously address the deficit that we're facing in our ears. And so I, I think it's going to come down to needing to um, fully evaluate our, our programs and services. What's critical to this, to the city and to the organization and prioritizing things so that we, if we do need to cut, um, we, we have some basis and, and we need to be really taking that serious and if, and if it starts at mid-year, um, that might be the, the, the appropriate time to, to at least begin that discussion, but we, we should be more proactive than, than reactive. And I think that we have been more reactive than proactive. And I think that we have been more reactive than proactive.
Okay, so it was not part of the motion, right? We've given you direction, we've heard the concerns. So it will, we will set the date of June 18th for the budget as it is now, but then you're going to bring back in several months this evaluation of the, where we could potentially save money. And we're going to come back with the ARPA conversation.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is that clear now? Dan, are you okay, ready? We're all okay now? Okay, so we'll call.
Aye. Sorry.
That last time.
Aye. Councilmember for Tato.
Aye.
Councilmember Stizola.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Aye.
Your man.
Aye, that motion passes. Thank you. All right, can we take a five-minute break? We only have one or two items, but I need a break. We're back in session. Uh, item 13, authorization to extend the existing master equity lease agreement with Entertise Police Management. We got our number one public works director person, Todd Perso.
Thank you, Mayor. A pleasure to be here again. Um, lots of discussion tonight about infrastructure, and I know that we've had much discussion about, uh, what, what you might call our more traditional infrastructure over the years, parks, streets, uh, our, our buildings are quite prominent, but we don't often think as a fleet as part of our infrastructure. But fleet is something that is very key to how we deliver our services. It's part of our operations and our department is, is proud to, uh, maintain the city's fleet of approximately 85 vehicles, plus or minus. That includes our public safety vehicles, it includes our service vehicles. And, uh, we've had some challenges with that over the years. Um, particularly, you know, in the, in the old, uh, in the olden days, which would be pre-pandemic, our, our service model was to purchase vehicles and to kind of continue to maintain them. We have, we had replacement criteria, which, which varied by the type of vehicle, whether they were public safety or whether they were service vehicles. And we would often have challenges when those vehicles met the end of their useful life. And we would often come to council one year where we would need to replace $500,000 worth of vehicles, and the next year we might come to council and need $150,000. And we had, we had pretty large swings in the requirements for how we would need to replace our vehicles. We often extended the, the life of vehicles and, and extending the life of a vehicle means keeping it in service for a longer period of time, um, which sounds like a good thing to do because it does defer the expense, but oftentimes that would result in increased maintenance costs, increased, increased repair costs, sometimes increased downtime because repair parts were not always readily available. As these challenges were, were hitting us, uh, coincidentally, we also began to experience the effects of the pandemic and the supply chain, you know, really tightened up. And things that we were considering doing pre-pandemic, that seemed like the right time for us to implement some of this. So we searched out a, uh, a, a vehicle leasing firm. We selected enterprise, we entered into, uh, into equity lease agree, a, a master agreement that then would allow us to replace our vehicles with individual lease agreements. And this is really the other end of the spectrum. You know, on, on the one side, what we used to do is buy vehicles, maintain them, and try to get every last mile out of them, which had some benefits, but it also had some downsides. And what the downside was, is as I mentioned before, our cost would increase, but our surplus value on those vehicles, when it was time to replace, was approaching zero in many cases. Those vehicles were not very valuable, didn't have a lot of useful life left in them. And when we'd send them to auction, we didn't get a lot back. The other end of that spectrum is to replace vehicles when they're still serviceable and try to recapture some of that residual value. So the theory with, with, uh, with vehicle leasing is that we enter into these five-year agreed, individual agreements for, for each piece of equipment that we replace. And at the end of that five years, we are then able to recapture that residual value in, when the vehicle is sold by enterprise. And that residual value is equity that the city has to apply then to future leases. So you really don't capture the benefit of that until you reach a year where you are then replacing leased vehicles, right? So up to this point, we have only been replacing vehicles that would have otherwise been purchased with leased vehicles. And over the last four fiscal years, our leasing costs have continued to increase. And, and you can see that we're asking for approval to, uh, ex, to, uh, to execute a purchase order in fiscal year 25 in the amount of $193,000. And we've given you amounts for future years as well. Fiscal year 26 is to, is projected to be even higher, approaching $300,000. And that's not necessarily because we had a bubble. That is because we made a conscious decision to defer some vehicles that we would have otherwise replaced with leases this year because we knew we had budget constraints. We, we deferred a couple of those into fiscal year 26. So fiscal year 26 is going to be even a bigger bill for us to swallow than fiscal year 25. But the interesting thing about leasing is in fiscal year 27 is when we begin to return vehicles from our first year of leasing. And you will see in our projections that our estimated annual leasing costs fiscal year 27 are projected to, to fall by 50% of that 300, they go down to 150,000. And plus or minus, that will be the number that we, that we stabilize at. You'll see it goes down to 120 one year, it's back up to 160 one year. But that will essentially be the number that we stabilize at for our light, our light duty vehicles, uh, possibly. This does not include, does not, I should say, this does not include our parked PD vehicles. But what this does, with this model, is it allows for a more predictable, um, expenditure and revenue stream because there's, there's money flowing both ways by the resale of the vehicles and by us entering into the new leasing agreements. Um, and it will eliminate those needs for those big bubbles of equipment that you, that some of you that have been on the council for a while have seen. So this is really, uh, uh, a methodology that helps, helps us normalize our, our expenditures. The other thing that this does for us operationally is it keeps vehicles under, under warranty. So essentially, our light duty vehicles are under warranty the entire time that we have them. So when they need repairs that are above and beyond, we take them to the nearest XYZ dealership and the repairs are done under warranty. So it has been saving us significant money in the operating budget in both, uh, in both, uh, repair costs, maintenance costs. Um, and what it has also done is that we have been able to run a little bit leaner operationally. So you will see that I have a, a little description in here where we used to run three FTEs in, uh, in equipment maintenance. We still have three in the budget, but we have been running with two FTEs for, this will be going on the third fiscal year. Our long-term plan is to reconfigure that group. We're going to have to do some, uh, some, we'll have to do some position reclassification. Uh, we're going to essentially at some point eliminate the supervisor position, but we want to create a, a lead mechanic. I don't want to go into too much of that right now, but what, what this is really getting at is that operationally, we've been able to reduce our expenditures and fleet maintenance by a number approaching $200,000 a year. And so we feel that, that, uh, that being able to that is kind of a side benefit of us entering to the leasing program because we do have nicer vehicles, which we didn't get them just because they're nice. We got them because they're cost-effective, they're cost-efficient, and it keeps us on a more normalized replacement schedule. Um, so what we're really asking for you tonight is your authorization for us to enter into the, uh, execute a purchase order in fiscal year 25 in the amount not to exceed 193,000. And then we are further asking for the authorization for the next four fiscal years in the amounts that we have in the table, 300,000, 150,000, 120,000, 165,000 over the subsequent four fiscal years. And we would like to continue, uh, this leasing program. Um, we have other programs that we're doing. So if we, what, you know, at some point we'll come back and talk to you about PD marked vehicles. That's a little bit of a different animal, but this really covers about two-thirds of, of our fleet, uh, through this type of vehicle, um, our, our light duty pickups and, and our sedans. So, um, that's really where we're at on this. We think it's a good program. We recommend continuing it, and I am happy to answer questions at this point.
Okay, questions? Elliot?
Oh, so you, I think you just touched a little bit on, on the, uh, the light duty vehicles, vehicles, the public works trucks and those types of things, are they covered under this?
Yes, they are.
What about some of the other, um, heavier equipment or?
Yes, so this, this really covers kind of our lighter to medium duty trucks, which would be, you know, in, in certain, under certain manufacturers, might be an F-150 up to like an F-350. And in certain cases, we can go a little bit heavier than that. But this doesn't really get into the specialized equipment. So, uh, so Ron Termina and I and the staff are having continued discussions about maybe what the best way to replace some of those are. In some cases, we can, uh, purchase those with a separate lease, not through enterprise. Uh, would be the same type of program. In some cases, we may choose to actual purchase those because those vehicles tend to last us a little bit longer, very low mileage, high, high utilization, high value. But in some cases, we can get 25 to 30 years out of a specialized type vehicle. This program really focuses on the ones that are driven nearly every day. Uh, and kind of the, the, the nice little thing about the resale value on these is, is it remains very high. The secondary pickup market in particular is a very strong market in light of the supply chain issues, which kind of help our cause. Uh, but also Campbell being a compact city, we tend not to rack up an undue amount of mileage. So when we return vehicles, they, they might be five years old, but they don't have any, they won't have anywhere near 100,000 miles. They might be in the 40 to 60,000 mile range, which is a pretty attractive aftermarket or second market purchase, uh, for the private sector.
Thanks, Todd.
Um, thanks much, Todd. Um, the, the projections for fiscal years up through, uh, 29, i- is that just our analysis, is that from discussion with enterprise? We, and, and, and how confident do we feel? Do we have any protection if inflation or other costs go up on, on their end?
Ye- yes, um, that's a great question, and it is based on our conversations, both with our internal staff and our conversations with, with enterprise. Those are really not guaranteed. At this point, this is our projection based on what we think we will get based on, on, on our resale. Um. It's going to be pretty close in the, the, I mean, we can't really say for sure. I mean, we, we've, we have, uh, we have adjusted a little bit for inflation, but, but if things were to turn tremendously, we would have to return to council in, in, you know, perhaps in the interim. But the reason that we included these is because if, if we do in fact hold to these numbers, we won't have to come back to council. But even in the event that, that we do, it gives council a better sense of what the, what the future projections look like. As opposed to what we've experienced o- over the past several years.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Questions, questions, nope. How many are hybrids?
I think right now we've only, it's only our pool car vehicles, so we do have a few Priuses, we have the Escapes. I don't think we're getting light duty trucks yet.
Is there any hybrids in this?
Well, when, when, as we replace these, we certainly are looking at, at hybrids.
But no full electric?
Not in through enterprise, we're actually getting a full electric truck on a separate grant that we got, actually got through, uh, S V C E. So that's actually something that we're going to get next week and we will own that vehicle, that will not be a lease, but that will be a Ford Lightning truck. And so that's a good opportunity for us to test that, because if that works well for us, we could transition. Perhaps we can step into some of those as part of the leasing program as well.
Right, we still haven't figured out what to do with the batteries. That's why I don't have one. Uh, all right, thank you, and I'm welcoming it to the public, is there anybody in the public who would like to speak? A new person there? No? Okay, all right, nobody wants to speak. Uh, I'll return it back to council for discussion or motion?
I'll, I'll just make a brief comment, um, thank you so much to staff for the implementation of this program, I, I think it's been really successful. Um, and, and, and just to close up my comments, I, I realize we're not going to get a perfect projection, I, I mean, and, but. Really where I end up is the, with the savings, I think even if costs go up, it, it's going to be a relatively very modest amount, so. Um, I, I, I just hope that as we get more data back, that we continue to refine that if we, if we can for the future and then just let us know how the program's going. But, uh, I'm, I'm glad to hear it's been, uh, it sounds like it's been successful.
Motion?
Sure. Um, I would like to make a motion for.
Are we allowed to just say motion per recommended action?
Motion per recommended action? I just did it.
Okay, we got a motion.
I'll say.
It's a long reading.
Member Bybee?
Aye.
Councilmember Fratato?
Aye.
Councilmember Scizola?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Landry?
Aye, great, and now we have our Heritage Theater general fund policy and Natasha Gissel, how are you?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council, so tonight I'm here to bring forward the council policy. That sets a set limit of general fund subsidy for the Heritage Theater. So I'm going to start kind of at the beginning so that everyone is even playing field, for those of you who haven't been around since the theater reopened. So in the early two thousands, um, the city embarked on renovating the Heritage Theater to open up as a venue for cultural arts and. And live performances here with the city. And in that, um, work with the consultant, a business plan was produced. Um, it was quickly found that the arts do not make money and that they were anticipating, um, a shortfall in revenues and expenditures on an annual basis. Roughly about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so early on with the capital campaign that took place, there was money set aside to assist in that shortfall. Um, for the first couple of fiscal years and the theater reopened in two thousand and four. And the capital reserve that was set aside lasted for several fiscal years and I think farther than they had anticipated. Um, because the, the building and the revenues and expenditures had done well for the first couple of years. It expended itself in fiscal, not oh nine, um, coincidentally at the time of economic downturn. So there were some challenges faced by the city, um, and the city was trying to determine how much can we continue to support this? Because this is a new added expense. Um, and so staff brought forward council in two thousand nine, I think, or two thousand ten and brought forward several recommendations. Um, one of them was to increase the preservation enhancement fee to two dollars and change the name to the facility fee. And then there was a limit set to a hundred thousand dollars of general fund subsidy. Um, with the request that staff would continually to monitor the preservation enhancement fund as well as whether or not the subsidy level is working. And so, um, shortly thereafter in two thousand fifteen, it was brought back to city council. The hundred thousand dollars just didn't seem enough, um, and like I said, early on, they had anticipated close to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in shortfall. And so, um, at that time in two thousand fifteen, what had happened is the increase in the preservation enhancement fund. What we did is we kind of separated it in GL, um, accounts for finance to make it very clear. Some is for operating and some is for preservation. And the preservation is, um, to help the building with capital projects in a very timely manner. We're not, um, competing for capital dollars through the budget process. And, um, when you're having an arts building with live performances, if something goes down, it needs to be replaced fairly quickly. And that's kind of what that fund was for, so those were kind of separated on the backend. Um, and then the subsidy level was also increased to two hundred thousand dollars that year. Um, and again, it was, you know, to keep bringing this back and annually reviewing that. And the theater has consistently performed fairly well and has met that with, um, sometimes if we needed to balance that two hundred thousand. We would use the preservation revenue that had come in. Um, and so I think you're doing, we were on the straight and narrow for a long time and then COVID happened. Um, and so post COVID, we're still in a recovery phase. Um, and so last fiscal year, fiscal twenty three, we had to draw down thirty five thousand dollars additionally out of the preservation enhancement fund. And so the reason I'm here this evening is because it would be prudent for me to kind of sit on my hands and annually kind of reduce this, this bond. And I'm bringing it here before council to kind of make a decision of, do we want to continue to say that fund of preservation and enhancement to manage the equipment? Inside that building, do you want to keep that and preserve it? Um, and kind of do away with this general fund policy of two hundred thousand dollar limit. Um, and my approach with this is that post COVID, our department and the city has taken a different approach to budgeting. In the early two thousands, it was very much division by division where we went through and be kind of, um, focused on individual departments, um, divisions within a department. And post COVID, we've taken this more holistic approach, um, to budgeting. And as a department, I can say that we do a really, um, sound job of managing revenues and expenditures. Uh, we offer a lot of community service, community services to our community. Um, and, and it's balanced by the recreation side, which are fee based programs. And so, you know, over the years, the department as a whole, um, tends to stay under a million dollars. And I say million just because one year it was close to nine hundred thousand. Um, but in fiscal twenty two and twenty three, we actually had revenues exceeding expenditures. And that was largely due to vacancies within our department. Um, and then in this last fiscal year, right now, we're projected about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars as a department. And so my approach with this as a department head is that my goal as our department is to kind of manage. What that is as a whole department, as opposed to one individual division kind of being isolated with this two hundred thousand dollars. Um, and so tonight I'm here to kind of have a discussion with you and how we want to move forward. Um, I propose a recommendation to eliminate it, to kind of put the onus on the department head, because whether it's me or someone else. Um, they should be managing the department as a, as a total number and, and making sure that that. Um, difference between the revenues and expenditures isn't exceeding a certain amount, uh, and is being mindful about that. Um, but when you put it into perspective of, you know, forty two thousand residents, even if you were spending a million dollars on recreation and community services, it's still like twenty five dollars a resident. So in the grand scheme of things, I want to, you know, my goal is to protect that building and the equipment. Um, right now, if everything on the equipment schedule that I included were to go out, we don't have enough money in the fund to manage that. Um, we're anticipating another withdrawal to close out fiscal twenty four. And the recommendation is that this goes into effect for fiscal twenty five in my part of the budget conversation right now. So it was timely to kind of bring it before council as well to have a real conversation about moving forward. So tonight I am recommending that, I am open to alternative discussions or options as well if that is the case of council. Um, but that concludes what I have to say and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, questions, Anne?
So just so I understand that there's the two dollars preservation fund or, uh, fee is still going to go into the preservation fund?
Yes, so how it works is that if you need, need to replace equipment, there, there, the money's there to do that. But if, if, if it runs short, then it'll come out of the general fund, out of your recreation budget or? For like if it's a replacement, we would then be annually doing requests through the budget process if the fund is not there. So if something, if the main drapery were to malfunction and we needed to replace it and the nonprofit group couldn't. Be a supporting financial contributor to replace that immediately, then we would wait for budget cycle to kind of manage those things, yeah.
But if you needed an emergency?
And we do emergencies all the time, so yes, I mean.
How that, this will give you that flexibility?
Yes, it would, it get, having the fund does allow us to kind of come and present, we, you know, any project that is approved through, through the P and U is approved by city council. Um, but if we were to come for an emergency repair, it would be general fund dollars if we didn't have the fund anymore.
Thank you.
Questions? Uh, I guess my question is, doesn't this leave it open ended? You could go to three hundred, four hundred if you don't have a cap.
When that could be for any community service division, so it could be for your senior nutrition, it could be for your adult services. And this is where I, I am saying as a department head, my job is to put forward a budget that fully balances those things. And as I am putting that onus on my team to put forward projections, that there's an understanding that fee based programming. Has to help offset the, the community services we provide. Um, and I can say that, you know, the budget we put forward this year, you know, it had big revenue increases as well as expenditure increases. And the net was still like two point two percent, which is still lower than the like agreed upon cola that's coming forward. So as a team, my team understands that and, you know, the hope is that moving forward when I'm replaced and moved on, like that, that has continued the trend. And, and when we look at budgets holistically, it allows that flexibility to kind of manage that without saying, well, this division only gets this much, you know? And, and pinpointing that, and they're going to have off years, um, as an arts building, it's just how it, how it is. The same with, you know, because our, you know, our museum and Ainsley House, there is good years and bad years with how those, um, divisions operate.
And is there any, uh, discussion going on about raising the price of tickets?
Um, so for our shows, um, those are contracted with the artist. And so those are not always negotiable, um, sometimes, and it also has to, um. Those ones are tricky because the, the artist that we bring in is, um, they have very specific things. I don't know how to explain it because it's not my area of expertise and this is why we contract with Menutec. Um, but they, they do have some restrictions on ticket value pricing that you can do, um, for them, for the shows.
Okay, all right, that's my question, nobody has questions? Uh, open the public hearing, is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back for discussion or emotion.
Um, Josh, I just want to thank you for, uh, very clear explanation of what could have been a very technical topic, thanks for the work you and your team are doing. All right.
We're on a roll tonight, Elliot.
Yeah, why not? Uh, I would like to make motion that the city council adopt a resolution eliminating the two hundred thousand. General fund subsidy limit for the Heritage Theater operations effective fiscal year twenty five.
I'll second.
Motion second, roll call please.
Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilmember Fratato?
Aye.
Councilmember Scizola?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Aye, that motion passes. Uh, there is no unfinished business and would you guys like to make your council committee reports, are we getting too late? Okay.
Yeah, in case that, um, that's a Silicon Valley regional interruption. Um, having briefed all with the city, uh, personnel, the city's association, city managers. Uh, I think there was a general acceptance, of course, of the need to increase the assessment to each city, uh, over the next many years. By a very small amount to build up a reserve fund so that the equipment, when it needs to be replaced in ten or fifteen plus years from now. The money will already be there and it won't be a big hit to all the cities at that time. So we, uh, have received favorable feedback and I believe at our next meeting in July, we will adopt a motion to end that. So I just wanted to mention. Also, uh, the solid waste of board, West Valley. And the solid waste board, uh, we, uh, the budget was approved, uh, which sort of ends the, uh. Certainly in the discussion about the new contract for, uh, West Valley collection recycling. And so that gives them the full green light to go ahead and start educating, uh, the public now. You may have all received at least one brochure and veil, uh, about the changes in the program, of which things are recyclable, which things are considered food waste. What the new foods are and so on, but they are supposed to market this to a much greater degree. I think I mentioned in the past, there's no longer the twice a year free pickups, you know, the dates are set and everybody puts their things out. Uh, now every, uh, resident or homeowner or account, I should say, is allowed three free pickups a year. So they are going to.
I, I just want to thank everyone who, um, I came, both, uh, colleagues on the council and, um, Brian, our city manager, who came to the League of Cities. Um, presentation on some proposed ballot measures, hopefully that, that was informative and if anyone. Like more information or any resources that, that were, uh, uh, shared, I'm, I'm happy to share that.
Um, I just wanted to remind the council members that, uh, the city's association is having their general membership meeting next Thursday. It's a no cost event, but, uh, they're, want to be sure that everybody RSVPs for a head count for food purposes. So if you haven't already done so, please let them know. Um, and then last week, uh, I attended the Savaka board meeting and, um, so like, you know, that the board approved the, uh, addition of Los Gatos. As a member to the J P A, uh, at their, at the request of Los Gatos. So that was approved by the board and it'll be coming, uh, to our council to approve this, the J, the revised J P A to add down in the next month or so. And then I attended the ribbon cutting for Dopea Zero Restaurant, they've done an excellent job, really nice job inside and outside. And the Memorial Day Ceremony, and then I attended the PD promotional ceremony yesterday.
All right, great, uh, I did attend the city association's ballot measure discussion that Sergio's, um, helped put on. Uh, and after we had the mayor's and manager's meeting, uh, right after that. Uh, I was at the ribbon cutting for Dopeo Zero, wonderful restaurant, beautiful food, I was fairly impressed. They, I told them I don't drink alcohol and they brought me this drink with the floating square ice cube with gold leaf on top with flowers. I thought that was wonderful. I attended the Public Works lunch, that was great, the food, that tri tip, man, it melted in your mouth. That was lovely out at Edith Morley. Um, I attended the Veterans Memorial Day, I was very surprised of how many, I shouldn't say I was surprised. I was very glad to see how many people actually attended and it was very well attended this year. Um, also the ribbon cutting for Synergy Adult, um, Care, it's over by Psycho Donuts. Um, this Thursday at eleven AM, I invite all of you to go to the library groundbreaking for their new building next to their district office. It's called The Nest. Um, there, uh, it's going to be a lot of meeting rooms and a sort of ability for the community to go in there. And, um, they're really promoting their environmental friendliness, the bird friendly building design, the native plants. So that's at eleven o'clock on Thursday. Uh, tomorrow that I'm hosting the DCBA meeting here in the council chambers. Um, they are, uh, still trying to do the car show and we'll get a little feedback on Boogie. Uh, so that'll be here. And then today we did not have a quorum for the education committee, but we still were able to get some feedback. Uh, and share what we were talking about, Natasha was there, library was there, the Campbell Union School District was there. Um, so that was all of my busy, busy two weeks. And at that point, at this point, we will adjourn meeting. Do we get to bang again?